Manhattan City Commission on January 24th to order, and we'll begin with the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And I think right off the bat is Ron Fair, the city manager, and our agenda this evening is, relates to hearing from the major departments in the city.
Thank you, Mayor. Commissioners, good evening. Appreciate this opportunity for our departments to give you an update, kind of on some, have a quick look back at 21 for a few items, and then also some of the challenges and plans we have for this semester based on the budget that's been approved and different initiatives, some of the challenges that we have facing us and moving forward. So what you might recall, we adopted a new strategic plan late last year, a significant document, something that we really want to try to start focusing on, and please bring this with you to the retreat Friday. It's got a lot in it that we'll focus on trying to establish a lot of the goals and priorities that was developed as part of this document, and so that'll be a key piece that we'd like to do. As part of that, we created a new mission statement to, we put the well-being of people at the heart of everything we do. And we do that by having a well-trained staff that's highly motivated, professional city staff that move the community forward in a way that is open and welcoming and inclusive, forward-thinking and innovative, accountable, transparent, and fiscally responsible, also contributory to a high quality of life with amenities and opportunities, and protective of our natural resources and environment. So a lot of work went into that. We'll certainly try to keep utilizing that in front of ourselves and you all in the community as well. Some of you will recognize this chart. It kind of is our analysis, and we'll certainly spend some more time on this. But, so we're kind of up there at the top just before the commission retreat. The staff did have a leadership retreat a couple of weeks ago, and kind of started to look at how we plan to utilize the strategic plan in implementing the priorities that have been established through the budget process and ongoing, developing then our CIP process, our budget process, and creating that that cycle that we will prioritize and develop a ideally kind of a multi-year look at different aspects going forward. Can speak a little bit on behalf of the city manager's office with your update. You know, we've had quite a few things going on that we've been working on. Obviously, I want to, first of all, say a big thank you to city employees and our staff and the leadership team for all of the work that they've done. And over the past couple of years, a lot of work went in with employee groups as well as the citizens committee, as well as the commissioners on developing that strategic plan. So we're excited about being able to utilize it and work with it. Obviously, we've had two years almost of COVID challenges now, and we've learned to continue our work, to pivot. Pivot's been a unique word, adapt and respond, and still provide the services that we can in an environment of lots of uncertainty. And so we'll continue to do that. And we've had the recovery task force that was formed early last year that has met off and on to explore some of the things that have worked well, some that haven't worked well, and hopefully we've learned from that. And ultimately, I know that task force hopes to provide you all in the community with some lessons learned document throughout that process. And so they'll continue to meet periodically and have that. Of course, the city staff has, in the manager's office, has helped facilitate that discussion along with Bob Koppel and Jason Smith, who are the co-chairs of that particular task force. We also facilitated the diversity, equity, inclusion task force out of the city manager's office, and they presented their report last December, and that was accepted by the commission. A lot of work on the North Campus Corridor, Edge District, that we refer to it, and of course, the the big project there was the College and Kimball intersection, as well as improvements in each direction of that intersection, substantial improvements along the College Avenue itself and going all the way south to Dickens Avenue. So lots more work to come on the corridor. We did a lot of underground electrical burial in this next phase on Kimball, as well as on North Manhattan Avenue as part of that. We also did design work on the next phases and actually awarded the contract for the phase between, on Kimball, between Dennison and North Manhattan. That's under construction. And then at the end of the year, we awarded the next phase, which is the middle phase of Kimball, basically from the West Stadium where the College Avenue project stopped, and we'll go just past Grain Science and the rowing facility. That'll include a reverse drainage road on that particular aspect. So a lot of work, a lot of coordination. Appreciate Rob, Brian Johnson, and his team, but a lot of folks have been involved, a multidisciplinary approach to that and working with the K-State family and our partners along that area. A lot of work also in Aggieville continuing with the parking garage construction, also the different, mostly complete with 14th Street now at Anderson, and then a new signal at 14th and Laramie. Work continues there anticipating a spring opening, and additional work right at the end of the year. The commission approved the construction, reconstruction of North Manhattan Avenue from Fremont to Bluemont. A lot of infrastructure to replace there. About 40% of that project is upgrading water, sewer, storm sewer lines, and then all the individual connections to each of the businesses with those with those new utilities. So that's a big component, and we'll start later here this spring. And then, of course, we entered into a pre-development agreement with Back Nine Development and their group for redeveloping the parking lot at 12th and Laramie called The Fuse, and we anticipate a proposal coming to you all for a final development agreement on that particular site this year. The commission approved amending the redevelopment plan for the Star Bonds for the Art, Museum of Art and Life with the DeBryans. And since then, we've decided to start a new chapter in that book. Y'all approved a notice of public hearing to relocate that project to a different site that the DeBryans have been working on, and so that's certainly something that carries over and will have a significant impact on on our workload. We also did quite a bit of work on upgrading our meeting packet. We switched over to Microsoft 365 and implemented process changes, did a summary packet with links. So we got rid of those big, thick notebooks and tried to go paperless as much as we could and put links and access to documents that are readily available to the public as well. Excuse me. One of the great things about that, under the old system, we used to, if one person had the folder open and was working on a memo, that was tied up for anybody to use. Under this system, multiple, I can I can watch the edits that Jaren or Jason or Brenda are making simultaneously, Katie's making simultaneously to the memo. So it's a great system, and we're learning how to better utilize it and look for more things to to come in that regard, and we hope that you all have, are okay with the the changes that we've made in the, by trying to make things briefer and more to the point. Also, so some of the operation challenges that we have this year. We have currently three vacancies in our department. We're recruiting assistant city manager, public information officer in our communications division, and also administrative assistant. So that's kind of been something you'll hear a lot of, I think, tonight, is the, just the challenges of retaining employees and recruiting suitable replacements, availability of replacements seems to be a lot smaller. And then one of the things that we haven't been able to do a lot of during COVID is training. Actually, we had scheduled an all-day training session utilizing one of our days at the convention center last week, but because of the pandemic and the surge, we decided to reschedule that. We didn't think it was a good time. Put all our employees under one roof in one room, even though we could spread them out a lot as we had started to see impacts among our workforce from various aspects due to the Omicron surge. So, but training's a key component, something that we continually need to do, especially when you've got some new employees. And, you know, as we get some new employees in, seems like we lose some, so we're not gaining a lot of group. I'm sure Tammy will kind of update us on some of those numbers. So starting year three of COVID, I call it the COVID roller coaster. Just when we think we're gliding to the stop, we get a new gallop, gallop, and more more exciting turns thrown at us. So that's impacted our workload and our, really our ability to be able to to do some of our normal activity in a, in the most productive way possible. We have a lot of carryover projects, and you'll hear a lot of those from staff, so I'm not going to spend much time on it. We've got a lot of carryover studies. Some of the critical ones there are total reward study, our pay study. It's going to be critical that we look at that and we find ways to implement different aspects to ensure that we can retain and attract quality employees. Looking at our backbone system, the ERP process, again, that's something we've started as well, so we appreciate the commission assisting in that development. We also have a number of initiatives and looking at different aspects and processes and procedures. We've been having some discussion about how our own, upgrading a lot of our own procedures to have them in place. And, you know, it's been a challenge for us from virtual meetings to hybrid meetings to different aspects of things, and hopefully we can make some some headway in that. I'm sure there'll be lots of new projects and initiatives. And one of the things that we have, will have out there is new and expanded grant programs. So the infrastructure legislation that was passed by Congress is coming in a different variety of ways. Somebody's coming and giving us more money in some existing programs that we're already have than get as an entitlement. Others are going to be competitive, either directly applying to the federal government, like the build grants that we've applied for for the corridor that we haven't been successful in. But a lot of the existing programs are getting additional funds, so we might be more competitive. But all of those programs take take time and staff to try and go after them and make sure, figure out ways that we can leverage. I think your staff does a, our staff does a great job in leveraging funds for our projects and try to do the best we can to to bring those funds in. And we've had some good state partners in KDOT and other areas. So ARPA, we've got a work session coming up in February where we'll look at how we apply that. We just got the final rule just earlier this month on ARPA, and some, they've made it, I think, some some good changes. It's a little more flexible. One of the things that they've allowed for is in the replacement of revenue, lost revenue, we had to follow this formula in order to accomplish that. They now have a, basically, you can take up to $10 million and utilize that fund for lost revenue. That's the direction we're leaning right now because the, you know, our total is about 12.7 million. So that at least can give us more flexibility on that 10 million as opposed to using the formula and the calculation each year, which we could do over a four-year period. It may be a little more than that, maybe a little less than that, but I think this would be the the better way to go from a, from that perspective, from a reporting standpoint, as well as some flexibility on how we use the funds. More more discussion on that to come. We are looking forward to also doing a multi-year budget and CIP forecasting. That's something that we'll be talking to you in the work session in February as well. So we talked about our mission. That's something that we're obviously going to focus on, implementing the strategic plan. Jared, you might just talk a little bit about some of the divisions that we have in the city manager's office and some of the focuses that we're looking at.
Yeah, sure. You know, for the longest time, city manager's office has just been CMO and the clerk's office, but we've expanded and grown our divisions really over the last couple of years. As you may recall, IT, formerly Information Systems, was relocated from the Finance Department into the city manager's office. We've been going through some extensive conversations on an internal IT strategic plan. You saw within the strategic plan that we adopted a lot of actions and goals centered around modernizing technology so that we can do more and grow our organization and transform the way we do business, not only internally but with the public. So we have an IT committee that's been working with our IT division to see how that growth can occur over the next three to five years so we can start, you know, really doing some cool things. Our IT division has has remained pretty steady. I was looking back at our 2009 budget, and back then, we had four individuals within our IT division. Today, we have six, but we've taken on a lot of things, you know, with our IT manager and our person who oversees our I Series, our AS400. We really only have four individuals who are looking at our network and server infrastructure, as well as trying to serve our 400 employees and over 700 devices that we have throughout the community, and that doesn't even include all of the software programs that we're using. So we have a solid team right now that that really is helping our organization continue to run, but we're going to be looking at, you know, additional needs in the future if we really do want to start looking at transforming the way we use technology and and growing our solutions. Over time, communications has changed too. For a long time, we had a communications specialist and then a community engagement coordinator in Vivian, who grew into that Public Information Officer role this last year. With the 2022 budget that you all approved, it included the creation of a communications division, which really only increased the total FTEs that we've had working in marketing and communications from two and a half to three. We relocated the former community engagement position that was in Parks and Rec that will now be under our communications manager in PIO, and then we were able to use some part-time positions that were available to create another marketing assistant. So we're going to have a communications division of three folks. Vivian, as you know, went to Riley County, so I'm actually, Kristin and I have been pulling double duty to manage communications until we're able to hire a communications manager and then fill those vacant positions and a marketing specialist and a communicate, and a marketing assistant to really grow that for the organization and the community. Parking services is another area that, over time, has been within municipal court. Fortunately, we were able to secure hiring a parking services manager in Adrian Tucker, who's a local resource currently working with K-State Parking Services and Infrastructure. She's the assistant director there and is going to be starting here in a couple of weeks that is going to be managing our expanding park, expanded parking program in Aggieville and downtown as we bring on a new garage. She has a lot of experience in implementing a lot of the things that we've been talking about with license plate recognition and then future on-street programs and any additional things that we do in the community or in the downtown garage. And the clerk's office is another area that, you know, the staffing has has stayed pretty steady, but there is a lot that that group is doing. Brenda and her team are working a lot of hours, and there's a, there's a big backlog in the the records that we need to to upkeep, and they are just, they're busy nonstop with all of the ordinances, resolutions, contracts that the nine departments are dealing with. So a lot of division growth within the city manager's office as well over the next couple of years that we need to look at.
Thanks, Jared. Just some of these other initiatives I mentioned, more more to work to do on the North Campus Corridor. That's primarily the design, final design of the intersection of Dennison and Kimball. That's the primary one, trying to get that all set in place with the opening of MBAF, hopefully about, even though they'll be operating, they're still in their, you know, they're going to finish construction phase this spring, and then they'll have a testing period for quite a while, and then they'll move the Plum Island facilities and folks' functions here. So it's really a couple more years before they'll be officially open and doing research as they do their processing and testing and startups. So our goal is to get that last intersection done before they officially open, and so that's kind of the timeline. We anticipate that final design probably later this year, and then construction would be next year probably. So that's kind of what we're looking at. We think there are some, we've got some funds set set aside for it, but we think there could be some additional infrastructure funding that we can leverage to help with that particular project as well. Aggieville, continue to see more activity as we do construction there. Mentioned the Fuse will, as we work to start opening the garage, as Jared mentioned, the parking management will start focusing a little bit more on that. And then, you know, what do we want to do and target with that space available that we're unfinishing? Now, we are creating some parking services offices in that Laramie wing, a little bit of it. We've talked about potentially using some of that for an RCPD substation to accommodate more space there for them. And then I think you're aware that the Chamber initiated an entrepreneurship report, and so that's a potential possibility on the 12th Street side. Again, not trying to put something in there that's going to compete with Aggieville businesses, but complement those businesses. So more to come on that, a lot of different aspects of that. First, first work session in February, the consultant will be here to present the annexation analysis. So that's the benefit cost analysis, looking at the Green Valley annexation components. And then on the economic development front, we've been fortunate to be engaged with a number of different prospects over the past year, and we see that continuing. I think a lot of this is driven by, one of the things that I think the country learned during COVID was we had outsourced a lot of PPE, vaccines, all kinds of stuff, work overseas that we didn't control. And so there's a lot of incentives for companies to move those manufacturing components back to the United States, and that's certainly something that a lot of state and local and federal government is working on. So we are seeing more prospects in that regard. The commission, of course, appreciates passing the speculative building program for other types of manufacturing that might occur in the community. And then with the 2023 sales tax that's, won't take place until '23, we think it's going to be important to revisit our policy. So we've had a return on investment policy, which we think has worked well, and I'm not saying we want to jettison by any means, but we certainly ought to talk about it. Is that the model we still want to utilize in determining prospects and different incentives that we want to provide companies? Of course, the new component of that is the workforce housing, which will have some dedicated funds associated with that, and we're doing the housing study now, which will kind of help inform potentially some of that. And then, so just revisiting that that policy for for what we want that to be going forward is, will be a big component of that. So with that, any questions you have on city manager's office? I got into a little bit of their territory, so everybody's doing a lot of stuff. And if there's other questions, we can talk about it later, too. So, all right. Well, I will introduce Rena Neal, our finance director.
Ron?
Yes.
I just have one question about the workforce housing study. When is that supposed to be coming to us?
I think Eric's going to speak to that. So we're just getting started with that, and we do have a work session, I think, scheduled in March with some preliminary analysis that's come back. There's a survey, I think, going out next month, and I'm stealing part of Eric's presentation, so I'll let him
All right.
do a better job of updating that question.
Thank you.
You bet. Rena?
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. The Finance Department, year in review, the city received a 2021 budget award. We also had a successful completion of our 2020 audit. We received the unmodified audit opinion, which is the highest favorable audit opinion with no material weaknesses. We have started the creation of a new CIP process, working with the various departments to get their voice, and that aligns with our strategic plan. Customer service worked through the implementation of the new online utility billing payment platform called Paymentis. And then accounts payable, they worked through the implementation of the new Visa Expense Management Portal for accounts payable. We are in the process of working with GFOA, Government Finance Officers Association, to work through our enterprise resource plan for the organization, and we are in desperate need of updating our financial system. It's over 20-plus years old. So last fall, we came to you with a consultant agreement with GFOA. Back in December, we started the conversations with GFOA and various departments to discuss the various modules and platforms that we're using. We had, we'll have a meeting this week. We've had about four other meetings prior to that and a few more next week, and then we'll finalize with a report that speaks to where we're currently at with our processes and our modules, and then where we desire to go. We are, as Jared mentioned earlier, we are really focused on trying to modernize not only the financial system, but how we engage with you all as well as the public and the various departments. We implemented SharePoint last year as an organization, and so finance has really taken a deep dive at looking at for the five advisory boards that we're responsible for, AVID, DBID, SSAB, and Special Alcohol, to create efficiencies with information sharing and streamlining the processes with the various ordinances and requirements that those advisory boards are responsible for. And then we had a couple of staff members who served on the Staff Technical Committee for the strategic plan last year. Throughout 2020 and 2021, you were made aware of just the various challenges facing finance in terms of staffing. As the slide mentions, we're extremely short-staffed. The accounting side of finance has 14 budgeted positions, of which only eight are filled. Customer service, for the first time in a while, has seven budgeted positions, and all of them have been filled as of last year. We have been experiencing a non-competitive pay when we have gone out to recruit for our treasurer and our controller positions, as well as our entry-level accounting positions. We have had to utilize Alan Gibbs-Hulick out of Wichita since 2020 to help us with our accounting gaps, so they have really helped us a lot with audit and any other new technical standards that have come forward. I would say the majority of our staff is less than three years in terms of tenure with the organization, so of those 21 staff are budgeted positions, and we only have 15 filled. Three of them have been with the organization over 20 years, and that's Suzie Short sleeves, who's the utility billing specialist, I'm a supervisor, excuse me, Marilyn Synth, who is the specialist in utility billing, and then myself with over 20 years plus experience for all three positions, and the others less than three years. Another challenge, and I just spoke about that, we have aging financial software. We have no technical support in-house, so while IT is now with the city manager's office, they are geared more towards our systems in terms of the network and the security and not with the programming of our financial software. Our software company that we use, Central Square, they are aging out in terms of their staff, and that type of software is not being utilized anymore. We are looking at cloud-based products that are the new wave in technology. We do have quite a few non-integrated systems across the organization, which creates duplication of work, whether it's through park and recreation, court, working with payroll. There's a variety of non-integrated systems that we are working through right now. Another challenge that we have, and we discussed this with our last tip note issue, is our debt capacity. debt capacity and our bond market and the cash reserves. And as Ron mentioned, we'll be coming back to you all in February to discuss all of those things, plus ARPA. For 2022 and beyond, our major goals are to hire an administrative assistant. We are the only department within the organization that does not have an administrative assistant. The last time we have was in 2008. And then to hire two accountants, one for the budget side and then one on the accounting controller side. We are also working through succession planning for customer service. As I mentioned, we do have staff that is 20-plus years, almost eligible for retirement, and making sure that other staff within the customer service department knows the processes for utility billing and the various systems that we use for that. Again, modernizing technology is something that's important, not only to the Finance Department, but the entire organization. So the ERP system, we'll come back to you all in March with an update from GFOA regarding our planning process thus far and the next steps, which would be to discuss an RFP. Banking tools, we bank with Commerce Bank, and we, they have various tools available to help us automate and become more efficient. Today, we discussed with them the possibility of safe, smart safes that will allow us to deposit cash within those safes and not have to rely upon our carrier, which is Brink's. They have had some issues with staffing and being able to pick up our deposits in a timely manner. Again, I mentioned the non-integrated financial data from Court, Civic Rec, for Parks and Recreation, as well as payroll, and there's others. And the continual use of SharePoint to just share information with our advisory boards and to streamline processes. Back again with the fiscal health, we'll be creating some debt, investment, ARPA, sales tax, budget, policy, strategies, and spending plans, multi-year planning information to discuss with you all as we go throughout the budget season. And I stand for any questions. Thank you. Next, I will turn it over to Tammy Galván, the Director of Human Resources.
Good evening, Mayors and Commissioners. I apologize for the brevity of my slides. I do have more information that I want to talk about a little bit, but I'll tie most of it to the Organizational Excellence Initiative as we go through. In 2021, we brought forward the Total Rewards Study, had that approved. And so we've been working with Alan Gibbs-Hulick, AGH, who is also our Finance Department Assistant, to work through some of the parts of the Total Rewards Study so that we can build a new classification system, make sure our job descriptions are updated, and then come back to the Commission with a final report, hopefully in March. And we've been helping the organization as far as being the COVID hub for the workforce, which I'll talk a little bit more about later. But that has, we've dedicated quite a bit of time as a department, helping the organization respond to COVID with policy development and tracking absences and helping people understand leave that's available, and just communication overall for the organization. 2021, because of some of the vacancies across the organization, was the first time in the last 10 years that we've had past due evaluations at the end of the year. A majority of that is just due to lack of time to work on those things. And so we just, we have so many vacancies in so many of our departments that our supervisors just can't keep up with the administrative part of their work. And then obviously, other departments will talk to you about the work hours that are required for their employees, but one of the things that Human Resources tracks and reports to the City Commission on a monthly basis is our absenteeism rate. And so we are growing in that, and we're up to 26.7 hours of absenteeism per thousand hours worked. So that's kind of one of those numbers we're tracking as well. We continue to work on implementing different modules for pay velocity to continue to modernize the organization's human resource functions, as well as payroll, which transitioned into, back into Human Resources in 2020. We supported quite a bit of seasonal hiring with the Parks and Recreation Department, bringing their programs and activities back online. And then we hired and successfully onboarded 71 people and had 63 people leave the organization. So it's keeping Human Resources busy, onboarding and outboarding employees as they come and go to the organization. So just a Total Rewards Study update. We've spent the last two weeks as Human Resources team, meeting with individual departments to talk about the classification of their positions based on those job descriptions we've updated, and we're working to create a new compensation structure that'll come back to the Commission, hopefully in March, as I mentioned a little bit earlier. So a lot of our time has been spent on that, as well as some of those organizational excellence things that, that we talked about earlier. One of the things that I felt was important to mention to the Commission is, during the time that the organization has been impacted by COVID, we've processed 357 requests in Human Resources by employees who needed to use some type of COVID leave. If, if you just assume we've been in this pandemic for, for three years, that's one time every, once every three days, our organization is responding to an employee that's been impacted by COVID. And it doesn't usually just happen as one person. It's one person, and then, you know, as contact tracing works, we're notifying more than one person. But that one person generally ends up in us notifying three to five other people. So it's really been kind of a, a big project for our department to manage that. And it, and it has created some challenges, not only with our, our department, but other departments as well, right? So when, when a department gets notified that they have an employee with COVID and they have three to five employees that are also impacted, that's reducing our ability to respond for services for the community on top of the vacancies that we already have that have those operational gaps already. Some of the future budget needs, we've talked about our Personnel Policy Manual. That is kind of lumped into our Total Rewards Study, and we're reviewing that, all of those pay policies, as well as benefits and different initiatives or incentives that we can have for retention for employees that continue to remain with the organization. We are being asked to provide more training to the organization, which I believe Ron, you're in a different spot. Ron mentioned that we did have a training day scheduled, which was a collaborative effort across departments to have our first annual training day, and we did, we are postponing that. But we're asking to, being asked to provide more training for supervisors so that they can improve in their abilities, as well as other, obviously, employment laws that we need to keep the organization up to date on. And then also helping to develop some type of career path development within departments, so helping employees understand that they have the ability to grow if they stay with the organization and they, they don't just top out at whatever the, you know, maintenance technician to, if we're talking about public works positions. We're still continuing to focus on employee onboarding and whether or not we can develop more of an employee academy, similar to our Citizens Academy that we do, and was postponed, but we were able to do again this year, as well as looking forward, potentially adding Human Resource Business Partners for some, for like our top three departments, so that they have somebody who is well-versed in all areas of Human Resources, so that they can be that strategic partner for that department, and they don't have to work through other areas when there's not an immediate ability to respond. When you think about how we've been responding with COVID, between COVID and recruiting, Human Resources has been at capacity all year, as far as work output. And the other thing that we need to consider is, most organizations our size have a risk manager. Currently, that falls under my duties, and I have someone that helps support me with the clerical and administrative tasks for that function. But most organizations our size have someone that manages the risk for the organization and handles all of that, and understands all of the legality that's involved in all of the different ways the city can be impacted in a, in a risk manner. Other things that we'll be including, as Rena said, we're developing kind of that five-year strategy for CIP. Most organizations are updating the pay study every five to seven years, just to maintain external market competitiveness. The city, the last time we did any type of abbreviated pay study was 2014, so it's been about seven years before we engaged in any type of study again. The other thing that our property insurance is recommending is that we're having property appraisals every 10 years on property, so that we're properly insuring our buildings and our equipment at the right values. Sorry, buildings at 10-year cycle and equipment on a three-year cycle, so that we have the right numbers on our policies should we have some type of catastrophic loss. OEI focuses a lot on reliable funding for our services and programs. We are trying to become an employer choice. We're not striving to be the best at everything. We don't expect to be best in pay and best in benefits and best in every category possible, but we do have to find a way to make ourselves a little bit more attractive. Some of you are aware, and I'm sure, I definitely spoke with Commissioner Ramada about this when we did our orientation, but the state made some changes to the CAPER system, and people who were in CAPER's one or two, which are employees before 2015, I think, the date escapes me right now, but not that long ago, those employees are guaranteed a benefit, so a percentage of their pay for the rest of their life, based on the CAPER system. Anybody entering the system after that, it's more like a traditional 401K. So they're going to contribute a set amount, and they'll be able to have a guaranteed benefit, but it's not based on their salary, it's based on their contributions, which is a pretty large shift in that benefit. And those are one of the, that was one of the ways we remained competitive before. We may not have been first in pay, but we had that guaranteed benefit of a percentage of your pay at retirement, and we've lost that with the changes at the state level. And so some of the things that we're looking at as far as benefits would be some type of vested program that we could offer employees in a 457 account, where there was some type of matching that would supplement that CAPER's three, because we do have a lot of our turnover in our, in our shorter-term employees, because they recognize when they come in, that benefit isn't what I thought it was going to be, and they're not as committed for that retirement So as we look forward, we're going to continue to support all of the organizational excellence initiatives. But one of the ways, as I mentioned, that Human Resources has maintained a steady workflow over the last year and a half or two, has been that recruiting cycle. Our turnover is the second highest it's been in the last 11 years, and our time to hire has decreased from 80% of our positions being filled in the last 45 days, down to about 25, 20 to 25% of our positions are filled in that 45-day timeframe. There's a lot of things that impact that timeframe, but we are having a lot of problems with filling our operations positions. As Rena mentioned, there's some difficulty in filling some of our finance positions. Community development, they've had a planner posted for probably three quarters of a year. Those, but those positions, those maintenance positions in public works and parks, and our building services and custodial staff are among some of our full-time positions that we cannot get people to apply for and can't get those positions filled, and that's where a lot of our vacancies are. And those are those direct operations that touch our citizens. The top five reasons that we've been tracking for people exiting the organization over the last couple of years are lack of advancement, undercompensated, performance evaluation, lack of training, and then some type of remark about leadership, whether that's my supervisor isn't trained enough, or I didn't like my supervisor, whatever that reason is, there's some type of a leadership comment in those, in those positions. So as we continue to evaluate those, we have modernized our exit interviews so that we can get a little bit more specific with employees and track that data electronically, as opposed to manually recording it from exit interviews. But as a department, we will continue to support the strategic plan that was set forth. We're really happy to have a mission that we can share with employees, that the, we're going to put the well-being of people at the heart of everything we do, because that mission gives people something to attach to, that they can relate to in a way that our previous mission didn't. We're going to, like I said, continue to work on those areas in OEI and, and have a plan with city leadership over the next five years of how we can continue to evaluate and implement some of those changes for pay benefits, our workplace environment, and performance evaluations. We're going to continue to modernize our processes by implementing more areas in pay velocity as time permits, because that's something our team is taking on independently, and Rena didn't mention it, but as we look at that ERP process, we are going to have to have help with converting and implementing that system, because that's a task that's a pretty, pretty difficult thing to just jump into, and we definitely don't have the staff for that. Again, we're being asked to provide additional training across the organization, as well as supporting the ADA Transition Plan update, which our department, we handle ADA for employees, and there's this other component of the ADA for the community that that transition plan really focuses on, and that's important for our state and federal funding dollars that we get through grants, because we're being required by the state to update that. So I want to make sure that we, we talk about the importance of that plan tonight, too, and supporting that, getting that done, because our timeframe is continuing to dwindle, and we don't have the resources to do that in-house. With that, I would stand for any questions that you all might have this evening.
I have a couple of questions. Can you just explain to me, risk manager? I understand it, and like if they're out in the field, as a Human Resources Director, what, is that liability issues, discrimination issues? What exactly is risk manager?
So risk management generally talks about any of your insurance, whether that's workers' compensation or the property and liability insurance that the city carries, and all three of those are under my, in my department. Our workers' compensation fund is self-insured, as well as our group health plan is self-insured. And so those being self-insured require additional administrative work, but they also provide benefits and savings to the organization by having them that way.
Okay. Thank you. And my next question is, for why people leave, you have the impact of turnover recruiting cycle, five of the reasons. Are the, so let's say someone like Vivian, who went on to Riley, would that fall under lack of advancement, or is that, how is that looked at? And then, you know, several other other factors, if they were retired or anything of that sort, I'm not sure exactly how you would track some of those things.
So as I mentioned earlier, we hired 71 and 63 exited the organization. Two were retirements.
Okay.
And I can't speak to specific reasons, but these are the top five in order by percentages of the reason given for leaving the organization. So lack of advancement was number one, undercompensated was two, in terms of percentages. I can share with you the graph, the kind of graph I put together, the four main boxes are those top four, and then leadership would be the fifth.
Yeah, I think it's important for us to know that those are in order of percentages, like you mentioned, too. I didn't realize that. And 60, 67 staff, you said, 62 staff?
63 exited the organization.
And two retired.
Two, two of those 63 were retirement, so 61. So we hired 71 regular employees, not seasonal, because that number's a little, quite a bit larger.
Right.
So we, we retained 10 in a year. So we, we retained 10 in a year.
Okay.
If you, if you think about it in that way.
Sounds good. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yeah, my question was actually, what Commissioner already talked about was the risk management, which you kind of explained, has more to do with the insurance and workers' compensation and things like that. It doesn't have anything to do with business continuity and what to do in case of a disaster, like a, a fire, a flood, a tornado, or anything of that nature. Except for insurance.
Traditionally, risk managers would handle some type of business continuity plan. We do that as a leadership team currently. We do also have policies that would be business continuity as far as creating a backup site if there was some catastrophic, sorry, catastrophic event, that we could get in resources to set up some type of temporary.
So you have a plan, like, God forbid, Ron gets taken away by the tornado, who takes care of what, where you set up your operations, the city hall's taken out, and all of those type of things?
Yes, we do.
Yeah, that is something I've unfortunately had to spend a lot of time working on. Typically, in a company, IT takes the lead in that because it kind of grew up with system failures and redundancies and things like that, and then in businesses, they tend to end up coordinating it across the way, although in the city you have other fire and other emergency people.
Sure.
Okay, that was, it's kind of clarification, I want to, thank you.
You're welcome.
On our, the, the mission statement of putting the well-being of people at the heart of everything we do, is, is that kind of, Ron had talked about that a little bit, but is that kind of the HR mantra of, of things, or is it, it's not necessarily the city's mission with the public, obviously, we're not, is our new mission as, as the city to make the well-being of the people of Manhattan the heart of what we do, or is it strictly kind of the HR's point to make the people of the organization the heart of everything do? Who, who can clear that up just a little bit?
So I would take an attempt at answering that. I think for us, we're telling our employees that they should put the well-being of people at the heart of everything we do. That's empowering them to help citizens and, and respond in a way that's trying to do so of putting the well-being of the community as the first thing that we should do.
Whether it's the customer service person being all they can be for their customer, for the.
The person responding to sewer backup, those things that we, we have the ability to help, to give them the tools, that's the way we intend to shape that mission that came from the strategic plan. That is an, an organizational plan. That mission statement didn't just come from city employees to focus on city employees, it was, we want to focus on our community and empower people to put that well-being at the heart.
Okay, I can get behind that. All right, thanks.
You're welcome.
I remember at one time, there was a position in the city manager's office, and the commission really wanted it in the city manager's office, and I, I don't remember what it was called, risk assessment.
Safety specialist.
Somebody that could tell anybody in the workforce, you have to follow this safety feature, you have to do, you know, some of these things, you can't shortcut. I don't know, where is that position now, Ron? Maybe you can help me.
We've transferred that to the fire department.
Fire department.
It was a, a better fit there for that person having access to more standard protocols and, and helping train the organization and working beside that. So Scott can probably elaborate on some of the adjustments they've made, because that, they tend to focus more on those things on a daily basis than you do necessarily in the city manager's office, but we still hold that position to be a high priority within the overall organization.
I think the reason we, I wanted it in the city manager's office is because it transcended all of the departments, and it wouldn't be buried in one department anywhere. So that, so does the person in the fire department work with the folks in public works and, and physical kinds of things in parks and rec.
They do, they still have a broad approach to everything. They just happen to be housed, housed there because the support for them is better there.
I wouldn't mind having Scott talk about that.
I even just interject, do you have a safety committee?
We do.
So, that's pretty.
I can talk about it now, or I can wait till my turn?
Okay, I, I just, I don't want to lose sight of it, and I, obviously, we have. So, but, that'd be great, Scott, thank you. Tammy, sorry to interrupt you. Uh huh, thank you, Tammy.
And I'll introduce Katie Jackson, our city attorney, to go through the legal department.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. Our year in review is like everyone else's. Our year was impacted by pandemic in terms of the type of legal work we did and our staffing impacts. As of, for example, right now, we have three people out of the court, courthouse with COVID, and a couple of weeks ago, I was the only person in the city attorney's office who was available. So we continue to have impacts from that and also to do legal work related to that. What we do is support all the wonderful things the other departments do in the city, that's what the city attorney's office does. So I don't go into great detail on the many things that we've done this year because everyone else is covering that. We support them with legal questions they have, the contracts, the ordinances, the resolutions, whatever it takes to help their program, project, or activity along. In addition, we have the court, which is its own function, the municipal courthouse. This year, they had a, they've, sorry, not this year, and at the end of 21, they had almost 3,800 traffic misdemeanor and code cases and about 7,690 parking cases that they processed through the court. That does represent an increase from 2020. Obviously, in 2020, enforcement on many things was down because people were not active in the same way they normally are, so we are seeing an increase. But overall, the municipal court revenue has been lower than projected, but as a reminder, municipal court revenue is a very, it's, it's really its own thing. We can't use revenue from a municipal court as a rent, from, we can't view it from a revenue perspective, it's there for justice. And we also can't assume it's going to increase over time like all our other types of revenue because that's not the way it works. We enforce what comes in from the KSUPD and the RCPD, they provide our workloads essentially, and then you, through the city ordinances and the state and the judge, have set the fines that we can collect and the fees that we can collect. So we're not some, we're not a function that can increase its revenue organically and, or even intentionally. It has to result from the administration of justice. We did a little bit of preventive law every year, this is something that I categorize to include, forms, rewriting policies and procedures and training. And this is something like Director of HR, Tammy Galvon, said that we have constant demand for, which I think if employees are asking for more training and more assistance, that reflects well upon them because they want to do their jobs appropriately, they want to do them well. But it's not a demand that we're creating in the city attorney's office, it's something that we're constantly being asked for. So I think that represents well, but it's something that we need to increase in the future. Our operations and challenges are like everyone else's, we have a small staff to meet demand. Legal work has grown in, demand and complexity, like many things. We are currently at the same staffing level, we were in our 2012 budget, and we have two employees right now, less than the 2012 national average of six employees. We are recruiting a new employee, which will help us, we would have then, in the city attorney's office, we will then have five full-time employees if we're able to successfully recruit. It's important to note that we're consistently operating below budget, not unlike the finance department, as Director Rena Neil explained to you. Our challenges and operations for these years, we, we like to do the most, best work we can with our small staff, and one thing that would help us is, is comprehensively strategizing and prioritizing the use of city resources. So the departments, the commissioners, everyone has many wonderful things that they want to do, they all would like legal work, but we're not able to always meet it the same on deadlines and those things because there's not a lot of interdepartmental coordination of those projects. I put a math equation on my slide because Director of Public Works, Rob Ott, likes to give me a hard time about my math, just kidding, Rob, but just to impress everyone with my math skills, I made up this equation, which is, our 2022 workload is 19, 20, and 21 combined. In 19, we had projects in, underway that we put on pause in early 20. In 20 and 21, we have had the pandemic in addition to daily operations, and in 22, we've resumed a lot of the projects that were on pause. I don't think this is unique to our department, I think that the city and a lot of organizations are facing this where they have all this pent-up workload in addition to having daily demands from the pandemic or impacts from the pandemic and all the wonderful new things that we want to do, but that is what it looks like in our office. As a reminder, I know you hear from the departments, the operational departments, the, all the programs they're doing, how many people that they're, they're impacting, the projects, just a reminder, when the operational departments are increasing their work, so do the administrative departments, and in that, I'm including managers' office, legal, finance, and HR. So we don't, you know, we, you don't necessarily see us doing that work, we're not the ones in the streets, we're not the ones at the rec centers providing those services, but we are impacted every time the operational departments increase their work or take on new activities. The other thing that I would say, and you all are well aware of this, something that we've been asked not only by the commission and the managers, but the boards and departments to help with, is to update internal policies and procedures, providing training and following them. We routinely encounter what I would call preventable, practical and legal issues if we just had a better, more defined process in place that our employees knew to follow. And that's something, that's a demand, again, that comes not just from, not, not from us, you know, in creating that demand, it's something that's creating, or it's coming from the departments. So for 22 and beyond, we are, like I said, we are recruiting for a new attorney. This position has been budgeted since 20, it hasn't been hired, so this is not something new and exciting, it's something that's, we're finally getting around to. No, at this point, no plan to hire or to add positions to the city attorney's office next year, I guess something tremendous could happen, but we're planning to stay at the staffing level for a while. We would like to increase our preventive law, which I've talked about, and just as a reminder, our initiatives are those of the departments and the commission. You primarily drive our work in the city attorney's office. A couple notes about municipal court, we do have some, we have, we're working on succession planning, we have three long-term employees who will be retiring in the next months to a couple of years. We are going to have to evaluate what that means for the municipal court staff, if we need to add an additional clerical to offset some of that longevity. And then we are, I work with the court administrator, Jennifer Holmes, so that we're planning for our technology, our court management system and our file management, that we can continue to support that over the next five or 10 years. We have no immediate needs with those things, but we want to be ahead and be sure that we can continue to maintain those systems that are essential to how the municipal court operates. One thing I meant to say on the city attorney's office with our employees, just to dovetail on what Tammy Galvon said, other than me, the employees in the city attorney's office are five years or less employees, so they didn't have the, they don't have capers to tether them to the city or to public service. And so I certainly support the things that we can do to, to retain employees, especially newer employees who don't have the benefit of capers, but also our long-term employees. I find that a, a long-term employee can really reduce our overall staffing needs because they have the experience and the, the knowledge to do more work than maybe two newer employees in some circumstances. So I'd like to be sure that we're both taking measures to retain our long-term employees and to, to recruit and then retain our new employees. And they're two different, there's two different types of, two different categories of employees there with, with maybe different needs, and I appreciate that the commission and, and staff and HR and the managers have talked about the different ways that we would appeal to different types of employees. And that's all I have for my presentation.
About, I was curious with all of the legal issues associated with land for the levy, is, I know that's taken a lot of time as you work through each square, each foot of the, of the land we're having to buy as an easement because the city is responsible for that. Is that like half of an attorney's time for last year or this year? How would you estimate what that cost is, or what that time commitment is?
So the levy is a unique project because any work that we put toward the levy can count towards our federal match. And so in order to maximize our match with respect to the legal services that were, that were required to do everything, we, we have had Bill Frost, who is the previous city attorney, we have a contract with him to do that, and then he's billing his time and it's being assigned to the levy project for the federal match.
All right.
So it's taken him a lot of time.
Yeah.
Certainly, but it was most advantageous to the city to outsource it so that we could bill the time and use that towards our match. The only thing that, we've had to do some internal coordination of those things, even with outside counsel, and the same is probably true of other outside consultants, you still have internal management of those issues, but, and then also, we have had a couple, he's had a couple conflicts where I handled the condemnation and a couple other acquisitions, but those weren't significant. But in that, that case, that project is fairly unique because it, it was most advantageous to use outside counsel.
Okay, that makes sense. Thank you. Katie, I appreciate the, the three years that you laid out and how you had to kind of make up for it in 2022, and I think we feel some of it here as we make those decisions, but those contracts and legal work are, are so critical, so I'm extremely thankful for you to be working on that. But I think COVID also just layered in a lot more legal, whether it's with ordinances or the way we do work, or even with, when Tammy spoke of leave, leave of absence and such, I think that just adds multiple loads of work. So when you create, when you work on those, is some of that also being provided by national organizations or state organizations, kind of a template to follow, or is everybody on their own?
No, we have primarily been generating that work on our own. As you recognize, there's several areas of law that arise from the pandemic, employment law. We've walked alongside HR in that, when the federal government adopted federal leave, we were working with them on that, the personnel policies, we, we partner on all of those and developing those. And then, of course, like you've mentioned, operational, emergency operation things, the mask and ordinance. No, frankly, for the most part, we do our best to talk to our peers and do our research and cobble together whatever, whatever we can come up with. So I have not had a lot of models for the legal work that I've done, especially early in the pandemic, because they didn't exist. The next pandemic, which I hope comes a century from now, there will be models for people to follow, so they'll be better equipped to deal with it than we were.
Okay. Yeah, I think that's probably more challenging than such as land acquisition or any of these things, because we worked through those so much, there is kind of something to follow, but because everything is kind of changing so quickly in some of these, for the past three years, I think that's added an extra challenge to everybody involved, especially the employees, because if a preschool closes, and all the parents that you said have children in preschool, I'm sure our city staff has to work under different parameters, such as remote or whatever it might be. So thank you for working on all of those things and appreciate what you're doing.
Thank you. And seeing no further questions, I'll introduce Director of Community Development, Eric Cattell.
As the other departments have indicated, the pandemic impacted us as well, a number of these projects, on the first slide, were delayed by one, two, or three years, particularly the MTC was started four years ago, and it was delayed quite a bit, both because of the pandemic and because we were doing quite a bit of redrafting and rewriting and reformatting from what the consultant had done. But we did finish the, the MTC this year, finally, which is good. Under flood mitigation and management, we completed two flood grants, purchasing two single-family homes and 12 townhomes that were converted to open space, which counts towards our community, our, our community open space reserve, which helps keep that 20% flood discount on all insurance, and we're working to increase the level of discounts with the other CRS activities. the level of discounts with the other CRS activities that we do. We work with Public Works to design and then locate the turnaround on ground signs within the Wildcat Creek Valley. We also added the tenant flood hazard notification provision within the MDC. And we presented a work session to the city commission on potential mitigation fund sources for a permanent funding source using possibly a surcharge on the stormwater fund for the residential equivalent units. And we'll be coming back to you this year with some more discussion on that. With Aggieville, we continued to assist Jason in all the redevelopment activities. We helped draft the RFP for that Laramie Street parking lot and that resulted in the fuse proposal and helped review that fuse proposal, as well as some of the street shape design. Housing market analysis was another one that was delayed because of the pandemic. And so we redrafted and reissued the RFP, got the consultant selected and the project initiated. And that's off and running. And just to give you an update on that, we anticipate doing a community survey in February that will be released broadly to the whole community. And then in March, we anticipate coming to the commission with a consultant presenting their, kind of the first document, which is the existing conditions analysis part of that project. Just to remind you, the project is about a one-year project in all. And so the workforce housing question that you were asking about earlier, that will be incorporated within the recommendations that the study will produce. And I'll talk a little bit more about that later as well with the Housing Advisory Committee and that type of thing. The annexation study was also delayed a little bit due to the pandemic. And that was really because all the other departments that needed to provide input into the modeling just didn't have time. They were doing, they were responding to pandemic issues or short staffing issues or whatever it may be. But the annexation study is now complete and you will get a presentation on February 8th from the project consultant on that. Plaza West redevelopment plan, we coordinated with Flint Hills Regional Council and StanTech, conducted the market analysis and then developed those redevelopment concepts that the landowners can use if they choose to. And you got, received a presentation on that. Short-term rentals, we coordinated with Katie and the legal staff and presented a work session to the commission on a licensing concept for short-term rentals. Short-term rentals as a land use are within the MDC right now. And there's two provisions where if their owner occupied, they're a limited use, which means if they meet certain standards, then they're permitted. If they're not owner occupied, then they're a conditional use. But we do need to come back to you in the near future to discuss the licensing provision. Under the historic preservation and certified local government activities, we continue throughout the year doing local reviews. Benchmail, our preservation planner, is certified to do reviews for the state or on behalf of the state. That's what a certified local government means. We also facilitated the creation of the first local historic district, the Lee Elementary District. Continuing on the 21 review, we completed quite a bit of different CDBG and ESG grants activities. We completed the 2020 program year for CDBG. We finalized the 2021 action plan. We made updates to our internal housing rehab plan, which is the administrative guidelines we follow when we're doing the housing rehab program. We got $634,000 in CARES Act money, which we've distributed, we've allocated it to the associations that are shown up there. They haven't all drawn on it yet. They have to spend the money first. All HUD money, you have to spend first and then you get reimbursed. So we're still waiting for some of those agencies to request the reimbursements. We're continuing to administer both 2020 and 2021 program activities. HUD allows us to carry money over into following years. So that's why both years are still up there. We've done about nine to 10 rehabs a year on homes for low and moderate income homeowners. We continue to fund the five public service agencies. It's a small part of their budget, but it's an important part of their budget. And we collaborated Park and Rec to finish the Clarenburg Trail, which is that perimeter trail around City Park and that last leg up 11th Street. Should be done this week with the crosswalks that are going across 11th Street to the east. We also conducted a fair housing seminar virtually this year. Last year, it skipped because of the pandemic, but we had probably 50 to 60 participants virtually. And there are operational challenges like everyone else. We're always short-staffed. We never have been really fully staffed for probably three or four, five years. And so that just creates stress within the department, obviously, as there's increasing community projects that we're asked to do. So it requires us to prioritize and say no sometimes. And doing more with less just isn't sustainable. Currently, we have one vacant position. That's our resiliency planner. He's also the planner that tends to work more with the BZA, although we're hoping with the adoption of the MDC that our BZA applications have, will decrease. And we actually are tracking that and we have seen that they are decreasing. But that position has been vacant for about seven months now. We've been advertising it nationally and we've had no substantive applicants. And I think that's, gets back to the whole pay study issue. A lot of what we do, as you know, is liaison work with multiple boards and committees. We have 11 different boards and committees that we work with, which will include the new Housing Advisory Board and the Community Resiliency Committee, which are not created yet. But obviously, being fully staffed with the planners will help us be able to reach out better to the organization and the community. Implementing the total reward study and all the OEA initiatives that you've heard about for several years now will just make our organization more attractive and competitive so that we can retain our employees. And we'll have a budget that we can maintain professional certifications. Most of my staff are professionally certified, whether it's by AICP for the planners or HUD, or our housing inspectors-led certified. So the training and technology resources are important so that we can maintain those levels of services that the public are asking for. So again, funding the CIP and department budgets is very important to us. As I said, for several years, Manhattan needs to compete nationally and globally. And so we need to grow our job base and attract and retain professionals and a broader workforce. And that's, part of that is done through the placemaking types of activities and projects that our department does. And that requires planning and funding and long-term investment in the organization and the community. So looking at this year and the out years, obviously, we're not going to do all these this year. I've kind of identified which ones are directly identified within the new strategic plan. But we'll continue implementing the MDC. We're hoping to, within maybe a month or so, we'll have the ability to take application fees online and most everything else we already are doing online. And that was the purpose of the MDC, is have it much more user-friendly and every, people can do pretty much everything online now. The annexation study, we'll need to determine through your input what the next steps will be and how, and what you want to do with the results of that study. Obviously, completing the housing market analysis is a big one, which, as I said, should be done by next August or September. And they'll identify the workforce housing issues as well as helping us identify what that Housing Advisory Board mission should be and make up, or at least give us some advice on how that board might operate. And again, it's anticipated that community development will be the primary liaison to that new board. We're close to finishing the Wildcat Creek Flood Plane Management Plan update. Chad's been working on that and we'll be bringing that to the planning board and commission to adopt as a part of the comprehensive plan. See, for flood mitigation, Chad has been working, Ron talked about leveraging money. We've been given, we've been kind of authorized to apply for around 4.5 million in mitigation funds. Some of that will be used to buy out some more houses in the Wildcat Valley, voluntary buyouts. And the lion's share of that will be used to help national church residences relocate Garden Grove Apartments, buy that land, turn it into open space. And they're working with the Housing Authority on potential land downtown to relocate to. And then we're also using money to help Countryside Estates, which is a mobile home park east of Casement Road and north of Knox Lane and Allen Road, to, they've got six vacant lots that they can't use because they're in the floodplain. And so FEMA allows mobile homes to be placed in the floodplain if they're elevated. And so this grant would help hire an engineer to design engineered piers, which are permanent piers that the mobile homes would be placed on to raise them higher. Downtown Tomorrow Plan, we will be initiating this year, an update of that, looking at the, kind of the fringe areas around the downtown that are currently underutilized. So you'll be seeing that project starting this year. With Aggieville, we'll continue to help Jason with those redevelopment efforts. Strategic Plan also identified implementing bicycle and pedestrian systems plan and what they call the last mile transportation, which is kind of where the bus stop ends. Okay, how do you get that last mile? Is it a bicycle? Is it the scooter? Is it, what is it? Corridor planning, probably these are listed in general priority that the community development department would like to work on them. Points Avenue will probably try and tie with the Downtown Tomorrow Plan update. Anderson Avenue and Seth Child Corridor will be further out. And then lastly, they're, establish the Community Resiliency Committee. And the liaison duties again would be in community development. And that was identified in the strategic plan as a committee to create. And again, that's probably out several years. Currently, that's the planner position that is vacant, is our resiliency planner. So with that, are there any questions? Okay, next up is Brandon Kazar, which is our new director of the airport.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. 2020 review, we saw 57,000 commercial employments. That was up from 2020 but still down from our record year of 2019. As a reminder, in 2019, we had 77,000 employments, the most that Manhattan Regional Airport has ever had. To look back at how we started 2021 with our airline schedule, we started it out with two scheduled flights in January to Dallas-Fort Worth. And as we progressed throughout the year, folks started to travel a little bit more, feeling a little bit more comfortable. And the CRJ-700s, those larger aircraft, the 65-seaters, you know, returned to our market for two of our Dallas flights. And in the middle of the summer, American Airlines brought back our Chicago flights, the two flights to Chicago. And we ended up the year with three flights to Dallas and two to Chicago. The big, the major project that we've been working through is our runway design. That was, that took a lot of our attention, you know, in '21 and will continue into 2022 and 2023, which I'll talk about that when we get to the initiative slide. But 30% was completed in January 8th, worked through 60%, which had a completion of August 23rd. And just as a reminder, that design grant was 100% share covered by the FAA, thanks to the CARES Act that was passed in late 2020, early '21. A couple of federal relief and infrastructure programs and grants that the airport received in '21 is we got the CHRISAA grant, which equaled $1.1 million. We also received an ARPA grant, which will account for $1.5 million. And the bipartisan infrastructure bill was passed in late '21, which is going to bring $1.1 million for fiscal year 2022 projects to the airport. That infrastructure bill that passed, those allocations of funds will continue annually for the next five years. However, as of right now, we do not have guidance from the FAA on exactly how we can use those funds. Another big grant that we received in 2021 was the Defense Community Infrastructure Program, or DSAAP. And that grant is, was $5.9 million and it's going to help cover the cost of the ineligible items that the FAA has deemed ineligible with our runway reconstruction project. Some of our operation and challenges, I mean, you've heard it through multiple different departments, you know, we're having staffing problems. And the majority of airport staff, staffing duties are tied to federal compliance. So we have to have those folks there and available to keep the operations going. You've also heard this through other departments, more duties are constantly placed on staff. There's a couple of examples of some of the additional duties that our security folks, our custodians, and our maintenance divisions at the airport had to take on. We've also started to see some hiring challenges. And an example of that is a couple of years ago, when we went to hire for a airport security coordinator position, it's a higher, it's an entry-level position, but it comes with a higher pay. It's more desirable. In 2019, we were, when we posted that position, we got 50 to 60 applicants. We just recently had that position open and we ended up with about roughly 15 applicants that applied for it. So those are some of the challenges that we're having. As Ron mentioned earlier, COVID-19 continues to be a roller coaster that's affecting the transportation throughout the United States. Our employments and revenues were reduced in 2020 and 2021. However, we're optimistic that 2022 will continue to increase in our employments, but it's very difficult to see where we're going to get. Another challenge with, that we've run into with COVID-19 is coming back to, you know, having our staff having to be there to keep operations moving forward. And so we've had to do some cross-training with, throughout the different divisions of the airport to ensure that if we were to lose a bunch of folks out for quarantine due to COVID, that the airport continues to stay open and operating. Some of our 2022 and beyond initiatives, obviously moving forward with runway design, 90% was submitted to the FAA in the beginning of January. And then it's currently with them under their review. And then once they provide their review and provide feedback, it'll go back to the consultant, will evaluate that and submit for the hundred design. Immediately following the design completion, we'll look towards the runway reconstruction project. And you can see the schedule up there. However, I will say that that schedule is tentative, but we're looking towards potentially bidding in March or April of 2022. And then having construction start in the late 2022 with a lot of grading site prep work. And actual pavement construction will start in the spring of '23. And we're shooting for a target date of the fall of '23 to having that project completed. Another initiative that we, that we have is increasing our aircraft operations and enhancing services. And that's through our marketing campaign and just basically growing the airport and making folks aware that, you know, the wonderful service that we have at Manhattan Regional Airport. And that's looking at all those different sections, you know, not only on the commercial side, but also the charter and the general aviation side. You've also heard the citywide initiative of OEI that's been, the city's been working towards for the past couple of years. And a big piece of that is coming up with the total reward study. And so it's imperative that we evaluate and consider some of those recommendations that come out of that total reward study to continue to develop our staff and provide training opportunities to increase our retention levels. That concludes my portion of the PowerPoint presentation. I'll stand for any questions that you guys have.
Hi, Brandon. This is Yusha. Nice to see you. I don't think we've been formally introduced, but congratulations. I'm going to go. I wanted, I have a few questions for you. You said, can you just tell me what the annual budget is for the airport? Do you know?
Yeah, it's about $1.7 million.
$1.7?
And it's split between operations and administration. The majority of that budget, about $1.5 million of that is tied to our operational staff. And a big portion of that, $1.5 million goes to our staffing, paying our salaries, and having those folks that are out there to meet those federal compliance requirements.
So when the, when the COVID funds first came out, they took care of all of that? I think it was one of the few agencies, few departments that had all of that. It was encompassing, comprehensive. So in your, several of your bullets for the federal relief and infrastructure funding, you said the, bullet number four, it said allocations continue annually for the next five years. Is that $1.5 million? I mean, sorry, $1.1 million or $1.5 million? It says billion, but I'm not sure if it's 1.1. How much do you mean annually you'll be getting for the next five years? How much do you mean annually you'll be getting for the next five years?
So what I was referring to is the bipartisan infrastructure bill, or bill for short. And the amount that we received for fiscal year 2021 is 1.1 million. The FAA, the guidance that we received so far is 2022 and 2023 is based off a calculation of the amount of playmates that we had in 2019 pre-COVID. And so for the next two fiscal years, that amount will stay the same. But for '23, '24, and '25, they'll base it on the previous employment numbers for the airport. And so those numbers, so that amount of money that we could get, those following fiscal years could potentially increase or decrease depending on how much, how many folks travel out of Manhattan Regional Airport. Now, and I will mention, you know, as I mentioned earlier, we do not know exactly how we can use those funds yet. That, that program or that bill was passed at the end of 2022 and the FAA is still evaluating on exactly how airports are able to use that. We have some ideas, but until we receive that guidance from the FAA, it's standing out there.
And I think they've tried to be very generous to the airline industry because it has been impacted so dramatically. So I would assume maybe a million at least, I would think, to cover. I'm thinking about it from our budget perspective as we make some of those decisions. Sorry?
So, sorry for the interruption. So keep in mind though that this extra funding came through the infrastructure program. So some of the discussion has been, we get an entitlement of about $1.1 million a year.
$1 million a year, yeah.
And so one of the strategies is they'll just double that. But in the near term, it appears that they're going to keep some control of that. It's not like the previous funding we got, which did come with a lot less strings attached and gave us ability to apply it to our operations. So this infrastructure money is probably going to be, require us to spend it on infrastructure, whether that's some of our match or they're just giving us more money to catch up some of our projects through our entitlement. So it's hard to say at this point whether or not, how discretionary the infrastructure dollars that we're getting that Brandon mentioned. But the good thing was, is it was approved as part of the Five-Year Airport Renewal Act. And so it is at least programmed, whether it gets authorized will be just the appropriations question.
Okay. And as far as the ARPA funds and the third bullet, are you talking about that? You said 1.5 billion. Is that the, is that specifically for airlines or is that, is that within that 12 million that the city might be getting? Is it separate from what the city is discussing?
So the ARPA was the federal relief grant and it's $1.1 million that are, that is coming to Manhattan Regional Airport to be used for those services.
Okay, so that is to the airport then. And the ARPA funds for the 12 million is separate from that, right?
Yes, it's separate. So the, I think you're misinterpreting there. The ARPA funds under the American Rescue Plan Act for the airport are 1.5 million.
Right.
And, and then the infrastructure is on top of that. But that's in addition to our normal ARPA allocation.
Right, in addition. Yeah, that's what I meant to say. In addition is, is my reference. And the other one for the Defense Community Infrastructure Program, is the 5.9 million from that then? Okay. And you said that's supposed to be the fill for the rest of the infrastructure for the runway? When you say rest, do you mean 1.50?
Yeah, so, so to back up a little bit, you know, as we worked through design or restarted the planning initiative with the FAA back in 2019, the FAA determined that they weren't going to fund the runway at its current dimensions, dimension 7,000 by 150 feet. And so the city took on, understood that the importance, you know, for our regional partners of having those dimensions maintained. And so we decided, you know, to move forward with maintaining that width at 150 feet instead of what the FAA was only willing to fund at 100 feet. And that Defense Community Infrastructure Program grant that we rewarded that $5.9 million is going to apply to those ineligible items, the ineligible width, and help cover that cost so that that cost share isn't burdened on the city.
Right. And that, so how much is the entire runway?
It's, it's changed quite a lot.
Yeah, the cost, I meant.
It, it constantly changes, you know, so take what I tell you here with a grain of salt. But right now, we're looking at about $44 million total for the project. The FAA's portion of that is roughly 90%, 34, $35 million. That leaves $11 million for the, for the local share that the city would have to cover with the defense communication or defense DSAAP money, that'll drop that amount to about $4 million. Well, of course, we won't know official numbers until we get those bids back from our contractors. And then when we have those back, obviously we'll come to the commission with our strategies and discuss, you know, moving that project forward.
Okay. I know I'm asking a lot of questions.
I'm sorry.
I apologize. One last question. On parking, how are we doing as far as the payment structure that we've created? That's going, it's probably already changed to $5 now, I would think.
That's correct. As a reminder, the commission approved in early '21, I didn't have it on one of my slides, to start implementing a fee for parking. And it was at that reduced rate of $2.50. Part of that, starting January 1 of 2022, that fee increased the amount that we've always talked about to support to cover the costs for the debt, and it's moved to $5. You asked me how we were doing. The revenue numbers for 2021 were about $190,000.
And that's, I assume that's what we anticipated. Okay, sounds good. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Could you pull your mask down so I can see what you actually look like so if I ever see you out in the public sometime? Okay, good-looking guy. Thank you. You can, I, I.
You're welcome to come out to the airport. I'll give you a tour anytime.
That'd be great. I need a new one one of these days, a new tour update.
Thank you, Commissioners. Please allow me to introduce the fire chief, Scott French.
I always think there ought to be some applause with that or something, introductions and basketball or something. Good evening. Tonight, we're just going to really give you a brief rundown of 2021 in review. And as you notice, the first bullet point up there is our emergency response. And we've seen a 22% increase in our responses, which actually unfortunately is a record for us. It's the highest number of responses we've, we've had. Looking with Riley County EMS, they also saw the highest number of responses as well. So roughly 200 of those responses that we increased this year were due to medical responses. With that, we have seen a kind of gradual increase on our average response time. We try to keep that in the neighborhood of five minutes and 15 seconds. And we're up to five minutes and 26 seconds, which is well below the standard. The standard is six minutes. So we're doing good there, but obviously it's something we need to pay attention to and see maybe why that's happening. Looks like we have a little bit of a typo there, but we did have five civilians injured in 2021 due to fires. Unfortunately, we did have a civilian death. That was in March of 2021. The last previous death we've had in Manhattan was in 2015. And we've responded to 65 calls outside of the city limits, 12 of those being in the blue township area and the others in the Riley County, mainly around the city of Manhattan within the two-mile radius. We saw a 12% increase in training hours over 2020. And one of the reasons I highlighted that is because in last year, one of our goals was to increase that training, especially in our risk reduction office because we had a lot of new staff. So we were able to do what we, we had planned to do. We also were able to train five additional hazmat technicians and advanced monitoring detection, added another four additional hazardous materials technicians. And then we also sent somebody off to the radiological and nuclear WNB course, obviously preparing for the opening of NBAF. We also were able to send 17 other personnel to National Fire Academy and other, other courses outside of the city, which we hadn't been able to do previously. Risk reduction, we issued over 104 permits, 86 single-family, and we're able to capture 156,000 in permit fees, which with the program being a cost-neutral program, which was the goal the first two years, we're expecting to get roughly 144,000 each to be able to break even. At this point in time, we're roughly at 12,000 surplus over what our expectations were over the first two years. So moving forward, I, I would project that we'll, we'll continue that and be able to actually stay ahead of the game a little bit there. Inside the city, we had 334 permits issued, added 66 new single-family dwelling units. Two, we had two additional dwelling units from a duplex. And so of the 68 new dwelling units, comparing that from 2020, our number was 127. So we decreased the number of dwelling units but increased the actual number of single families from last year. We also did 3,916 building inspections, over 3,000 fire inspections, provided over 114 public education events, reaching roughly 7,000 to 9,000 people. We were able to do with property maintenance, we inspected 65 dwelling units interior inspections. 64 of those were complaint-based, one was voluntary. We've registered 13,436 rental units. If you remember, when we started that program, we were in the neighborhood of 12,400. So we've slowly been able to add to that list. And then we had 1,636 code and zoning notices that were issued this year. And in the last two years, we've, well, really since '19, that particular division has only been about half-staff. And so prior to '19, we would have issued roughly around 3,000. So that number has dropped, but it's strictly due to the number of people that we currently have in those positions. Also quickly, it's not on here, but you had asked about our safety specialist. He moved over to, to our department this, this last year in 2021. And we've really focused in on getting him out into the field and working with our, our field workers, stopping in on job sites, making sure cones are in place, making sure hearing and eye protection's being worn as it should be. He's setting up training sessions, he's with the utilities groups, he's has at least monthly training sessions with the wastewater treatment plant, the water treatment plant, the norm at the storm, storming utilities. And then he's also offering roughly one to two training sessions a month for general staff. And we're just slowly building up the rapport of getting the right training policies in place. We've worked closely with HR and legal. We're developing our accident investigation form, making sure that's accurate and making sure we get, get our safety specialist notified quickly. So if there is an accident or something going on, he can observe, see what, see what was happening and be able to, through the risk management side, be able to correct that and work with that, that group of employees to, to prevent that in the future. Do you have any other questions on that that you'd like?
Oh, just curious, is, how, it was regarding to your risk management personnel, can, can they work, how can they work remote or do they not come in? They just stay out in the field or how have you managed that during COVID?
For, for our safety specialist-type position or?
Oh, I think more your code people?
Oh, all of our, our code staff. When the city was more, more or less doing a lot of work from home, we just had all of our employees take vehicles home and work remotely. They're able to do a lot of their work in their vehicles.
On an iPad, yeah.
And on the iPad. So that's, and we've, we've had to do that on occasion, but for the most part, all of our staff is back in, in the office and working on a daily basis now.
What do you do if they encounter people who are ill that they have to interact with? You just mask up and stay outside or what?
Yeah, with the, well, with our, our fire department. I mean, we've been dealing with that for the last three years.
Sure, yeah.
We provide N95 masks.
Okay.
We just do our job.
And do, go forward, huh?
Just have to deal with it.
I just wondered.
But we do, obviously, when we're going in from a property maintenance or a, some of our building inspections, we will ask the occupant, are they comfortable with allowing us into the, and you know, if, if they're not, then we won't do that. We'll figure out a different way to do it, whether it's taking pictures, I mean, with everything, technology's changed a lot. So there's a lot of, we're, there was a period there where a lot of pictures were being accepted as, as inspections versus actually going onsite.
And that was good temporarily, yeah?
Yep. So 2022 and beyond, the biggest things, and I've, I've talked to you all about this before, but identifying a long-term solution for the fire training grounds and the administrative and risk reduction offices. We know in, you know, 2034, the current lease agreement with K-State will end. We've had indications from the, the K-State's leadership that they don't have any intentions at this point to renew the training portion. And then it's very up in the air on whether that current location where we sit is a more viable option to have something different rather than our building there. So we're going to hopefully provide you some options and alternatives and some ideas. And it's really, we're going to focus in on that here in the near future. Increase in our risk reduction members ICC certifications. Of our department, we're one of the, I can say that we're, we're pretty pleased with the number of people we currently have employed. We're only down two firefighters. We have a third that is resigning, but we're in the initial process of our hiring process. So we'll be up to full staff by May in that. However, in our risk reduction, our, our property maintenance is down a position and will be down two. And the biggest problem that I've said with, with that staff being new is experience helps provide less subjectivity and it becomes more uniform on how we, how we enforce our codes. So, and that's really important, that we maintain that, that the idea of providing a, what's the word I'm looking for? Consistency. Because that's the biggest thing we ever hear is the inconsistency of how we're enforcing our codes. So getting those, those people trained and making sure they all understand, are interpreting our, our codes and regulations the same so that it's, it's fair and applicable to everybody that we deal with is important. And then we are going to look at and evaluate identifying, implement ways to reduce our average response time. That incremental creeping has been occurring for a couple of years now, so we really need to look back and see what, what's causing that. Is it, is it, is it the road construction that we've been dealing with for the last couple of years? And no offense to Rob, that it's needed, but is that part of it? Is the number of our responses are increasing? Is that causing it? So really diving in to figure out what that problem is. One of the things that we will be doing is, in 2021, as part of a CIP project, we did, or I should say, the commission approved us to update our alerting system, our alarm system for our station. So hopefully in 2022, we'll have that in place and that might help, help on some of those things. One of the big problems we have is our speakers and being able to hear the actual address that's where we're supposed to go. So we do get delays on, on waiting and trying to hear what address is coming over the speakers. Increase in our hands-on training. We have been able to obviously get our training numbers up, but a lot of that's been individual crews and stations. And one of the, something that's very important to us is making sure we can get our crews together and intermixed to make sure that all those different functions that are happening are happening simultaneously and in coordination with each other. And that's one thing that due to the COVID, we haven't been able to get the crews together as much. So we're really going to focus in on that. The other thing is, is we continue to build up in the Aggieville and areas, those four-story and five-story buildings are not something that we are well-adapted. Fighting, we don't have a lot of experience in fire, in fighting fires in those, so we really need to work on getting multiple crews together to figure out how, how that's going to operate. And then obviously, we need to continue to prepare and plan for the annexation study and what, what direction we may be going with that. And the ongoing just general community development and what that may entail. And obviously, the opening of NBAF, coordinating and working with the health and safety personnel that they've just recently hired, we'll be working with them, trying to figure out what our, what their expectation of our, our department is in, in dealing with. in dealing with issues there, so. Any questions?
Yes, Scott, this is Commissioner Ready. On your risk reduction, you said twenty-four dwelling units inspected. You said those were by complaint except for one, is that right?
The sixty-five dwelling units of the interior inspections, yes. Sixty-four of those were due to complaints.
Complaints, so what did you find when you did those inspections? I don't know if you would remember.
I don't.
What were they, I guess, what were the complaints? I don't know if you would remember.
It ranges, I mean, if you had, I could provide for Friday, I can make sure that I provide some examples of what was the most common issue that was found and some things like that, if you'd like to have for you.
That's no problem. And I'm thinking, is that mainly rental, then?
Yeah, all of them are rental units.
Not like a next-door neighbor one or anything?
Yep, no.
Okay, sounds good, thank you.
My question on that would be, and you probably don't have the information, maybe get by Friday, those sixty-four complaints, were those initiated by the tenant or by the property owner or neighbor?
Well, I can give you the specifics.
Reason I'm asking that is, of course, the idea was that this was supposed to solve the rental inspection problem if property, if the tenants would call in, and that's why that number's relative.
Right, I want to say we had roughly sixty of the sixty-five were tenant-based complaints. Two of those were referrals, meaning either we went into a place and, from the fireside or law enforcement. And then, and then the other one was, like I said, an owner asked us to come in and view their property.
Okay, well, it sounds like that number's going up a little bit, which I think is good. That was the intent of putting that in place, so, thanks.
Yep, anything else?
I'd like to ask about the web site that I see with rentals. Have we had a chance to upgrade that so it's accurate?
No, that's a, and I don't want to say it badly to anybody, but it's not a high priority, and the amount of work that's required to get those maps correct is taking a lot of time with GIS. And the biggest problem is, there's no central addresses, addressing. So, the addresses that we have in our database don't match what Eli and the GIS staff have for the city. And so, it takes a lot of time to clean the data. When you push it over, it takes a lot of time to clean it all, to make it all match, to get up on the website. So, we're going to look at another option, because I know that's something that, one, I think it's great information to have for the public. It's something we had and was working, and now we just need to figure out a way to make it so it doesn't cause so much extra work, especially with GIS. They've got a lot going on, so we need to figure out a different, maybe a different solution.
Yeah, it wasn't working before COVID even.
Twenty nineteen was the last.
I'm going to suggest you take it down, because it is misleading. Nope, you can't trust it, it's bad data. Why would we flush it up to the world to look, see what we're doing when it's not?
We can definitely put it under construction until we get it upright.
Nobody looks at it, okay.
Sure.
When it comes to potential other training locations, is there any other land to the south of the Amherst? Is there any other land around there that might be possible usage for a relocated training thing or a new training thing? Or are you guys kind of bumping up against the church and the creek and the other stuff?
No, there's actually, the right of, first right of refusal on the land we have is actually the nine acres behind the living room church.
So, that's our fallback if we can't sort of figure out something else, probably?
Obviously, they're advertising it for sale currently. I know that they've had a couple people interested, and I think one of the, moving forward, that's one of the things we'd like to visit at some point about.
That obviously makes the most sense, if, yeah, if possible, so.
Thank you, Scott.
All right, thank you. I'll introduce Eddie Eastus with the Director of Parks and Rec.
Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners. It's always nice to be here and be able to talk about all the things that we do, all the people that enjoy our facilities, our programs, activities. First initial pages here are just focusing on what our participations have been over the last year. Certainly, they weren't as much as we had seen in previous years, eighteen and nineteen, for the Discovery Center and the zoo. But, you see those numbers, forty-seven thousand, when I say collective attendance for admissions, rentals, and education programs, all combined, both at the Discovery Center and at the zoo. Past years, eighteen and nineteen, we averaged more in the area of seventy thousand. The Discovery Center for those three combined, at the zoo, eighteen and nineteen, we averaged more, eighty, eighty-five thousand. So, definitely down from where we've been, but I think that's no surprise. I think most all operations have seen a reduction in the number of people that were participating or even, you know, getting out and enjoying things. I just highlight the Discovery Center. We have some upcoming exhibits, which I think are going to be very nice for the facility and hopefully, continue to, you know, grow those admissions. I point out Kidscape, we started that in two thousand and twenty-one. You all are somewhat familiar with that. It's a reconditioning, a remodel of the second floor. Yet also, as you recall, it's all privately funded, donated funds from the foundation. One point three million, I believe, is our guaranteed maximum not to exceed for that project. It's underway now. We're hoping that it will be completed by April of two thousand and twenty-two, which will coincide with the ten-year anniversary at the Discovery Center. So, exciting year. I combined twenty-one and twenty-two a little bit with the Discovery Center, but I think it's important to point out, you know, the milestone in two thousand and twenty-two. Also pointing out, you know, as a department, I think, you know, we've done our part to be able to secure, you know, various grants related to, you know, all the COVID issues that we've all encountered. You can see there are shuttered venue operators, that's from the Small Business Administration. The Discovery Center was awarded. Across the line, you also see that Sunset Zoo was also awarded, that shuttered venue operators from the Small Business Administration as well. With the Sunset Zoo, again, we started Expedition Asia in two thousand and twenty-one. We do, we're close to having that completed now. We're not going to have a groundbreaking until April. I think we're targeting April ninth at this point. We thought about doing it today, but I didn't know how much attendance we could get out in the colder weather. That project is mostly completed. We'll be moving animals into that facility very, very soon. But, we want to delay that groundbreaking until the weather is a little bit nicer to be able to get people out and enjoy that. I'll point out also, that project donated funds. It's a four-plus million-dollar project, two point four through the foundation and the Foz Group, I'm sorry, the Sunset Zoo Trust and the Foz Group. And then, there was also substantial funds that were still available from the previous Quality of Life Sales Tax Project that was originally targeted for the zoo. Again, the zoo has been successful to receive some grants. One is a nice one, fifty-seven thousand dollars, to be able to enhance that Asian exhibit and provide outdoor heating as well as that ambient light on the pedestrian areas for that Expedition Asia project. They also received the State of Kansas Child Care System, if I could say that, Sustainability Grant. We received that also in the Recreation Program. Those are four licensed, KDHE-licensed, I'll say daycare activities. The zoo and our Little Apple Day Camp are both KDHE-licensed programs, so they qualify for those grants. Animal Shelter, I think, has been a very successful year or two. A lot of numbers there. Important to note that live release rate of ninety-five percent, quite proud of that. We're able to move animals, we're able to adopt animals out, a good number. I don't know that our numbers were really adversely affected with COVID. It seemed like everybody wanted to have a new pet during the COVID timeframe, and actually, you know, our activity picked up quite a bit. I highlight in here KSU Veterinary Partnership. We started out with K-State coming out with their trailer, doing spay and neuters for no cost at the shelter. We progressed into, we've constructed actually a surgery room out at the shelter. K-State comes out two days a week now, and they are able to do spay and neuters at our facility. It allows us to get animals up for adoption and out on the floor much quicker than we have in the past. If you recall, also, we adjusted our ordinance that only requires us to hold an animal for three days before it's owned by the City of Manhattan, which is consistent with the State of Kansas statutes. Previously, we had a five-day requirement. Moving to that three-day allows us to get an animal up for adoption quicker. It reduces that length of stay, it reduces the overall expense at the shelter. This week, I was speaking with Bryce Cox, our Director of Animal Services. We have one cat at the shelter. That's just almost unbelievable. A few years ago, when we were here and we were talking about the increased license fee, I believe at that time, when I spoke, we had more than a hundred cats that were in the facility. Our partnership with K-State is really improving the quality of animal, animal care treatment, making them more adoptable. We're moving animals much quicker than we have in the past. Our revenues are better than they have been in past years, and I really think our expenses are going to continue to decrease because we're holding animals less. I really want to highlight that.
See, I just want to make a comment, that, you know, I think part of why that's going better is a lot more social media presence.
That's true.
People just love those pictures of those animals, and they're doing a great job of, you know, decorating them up. And when they hit the Facebook page, I mean, it's so effective. My daughter called me from Arkansas, one of the dogs last week. One of her friends was going to come up here and adopt it, but it got adopted before they could even get on the road. I think they're doing a fine bang-up job on that.
Well, thank you, I appreciate, that's good to hear. And we have had lines standing outside the door waiting for us to open because they've seen those animals and they were available, and it's fairly competitive. Good to hear, thank you. Our next page, a lot of recreation highlights, a lot of numbers up there. If you recall, the last four years, we've been talking to the commission about modifying our programs, potentially reducing some, potentially putting some on hold. And we have done that this past year in two thousand and twenty-one. We did not offer youth or adult soccer, we did not offer adult softball. It's decreased our numbers, but there's still opportunities in the community for people to participate in those activities. The soccer clubs have offered recreational opportunities beyond the competitive that they have in the past. And there has been a group that has picked up adult softball, and they offered a league that still occurred out at Twin Oaks, where we traditionally have always hosted that league as well. I just put in here generically, adult, you know, sports, aquatics. These are the programs that we offer. You know, obviously, you know, in each one of those areas, we offer multiple programs, adult sports, youth sports, those sort of things. And, you know, I just note in here, it says, adult sports as example, two hundred and sixty-six teams, one thousand five hundred and two participants. Please remember, you know, all the people that are participating in those adult sports, mostly those are leagues, and they have a schedule. So, the other aspect is how many participations occur. It's substantial, because each one of those teams is going to play six, eight, ten games. It's more management of programs and activities than simply two hundred and sixty-six teams and one thousand five hundred and two participants, if that makes sense to you. Repeated leagues, and we have to manage those. It's much more than just simply those numbers. And a lot of times, we'll report out, you know, how many participations, but I always want to be careful, it needs to be explained. So, that's the number of people that have signed up, but they participate multiple times. Aquatics is swimming lessons and the exercise classes that occur. I put in your special events and tournaments. We had eleven outdoor tournaments that occurred at Twin Oaks this past year. That's down from what we've had in some years past. I believe that two thousand and nineteen was a record number of participations and tournament participation out at Twin Oaks. But, I was pleased with eleven tournaments that we did have, and we'll talk about tournaments a little bit more here. Facilities, we included water parks in facilities. You know, water parks, they've been a big topic over the last several years, obviously. We only had two of them that were open last year, but we still had an attendance of over ninety-four thousand. Two thousand and nineteen, our overall attendance was about a hundred and three thousand. So, not a significant drop-off, and I don't know that it's completely attributed to the fact that we only had two open versus three. Again, I think people held themselves back a little bit in regards to how well they were out and about in groups of people. We're focusing on three pools for this upcoming year. We'll talk about that a little bit more here in a minute. You can see the ice rink, you know, it's going good now, people will enjoy that facility. The Recreation Centers, the two new facilities, you know, Anthony opened up in May, Eisenhower followed in September. That member check-in, we asked people to sign up for a membership, it's a free membership. But, we want to be able to track how much drop-in use occurs. And you can see, even though it wasn't a full year, we had thirty-one thousand seven hundred and sixty-eight people. That's some drop-in, just coming in to individually use that facility. I feel it's a pretty good number through a partial year. The number actually, usage of the facility is greater than that, because we've been putting programs and activities in those facilities as well. But, I wanted to be able to understand how much just casual drop-in use is occurring. And probably half of those are pickleball players that come in every morning to play. I point out also, the Douglas Center here at the bottom, their member check-in, you know, was less. It's a smaller facility, it did open up sooner, it opened up in March. It's half the size. We struggled also to have it open as much as we had hoped to at the start of the year, because we just didn't have enough staffing. We have two full-time staff at the Douglas Center. We need more than that to be able to have that facility open more than eight to five, Monday through Friday. We started out the year mostly open Monday through Friday, eight to five, because that's all the staff we had. It contributed to that lower number. Right now, we're open, six days a week, we're open from eight in the morning till eight in the evening, as well as reduced hours on Saturday. I point out eight indoor tournaments in two thousand and twenty-two, that's what we have in the book right now. We have first Manhattan Basketball Association basketball tournament this Saturday. We have fifty-five teams right now that are signed up for that. It's going to happen at both Anthony and Eisenhower Recreation Center. So, unless you're participating and watching somebody, I'd stay away from those facilities this weekend, they'll be busy. Parking will be tough. But, again, you know, coming from mostly closed, not open, not doing things the previous year, I'm not disappointed with the numbers that we have for two thousand and twenty-one. People wanted to get out. If we would have counted every person that was on a linear trail or out just casually using the park, you know, all the parks that we have, that's where participations were occurring a lot in two thousand and twenty-one, as people are still reluctant to gather in groups. So, I'm pleased with our numbers, I think we'll be growing those in two thousand and twenty-two. Operational challenges. Ron asked me to put this on one page with the seven divisions that I have, so I tried my best. As an example, though, of all the divisions, I put up here City Parks, and I put new parking garage for two thousand and twenty-one. They still will be maintaining that, even though we have a parking services division that is forming. City Parks is going to be responsible for the management, maintenance management, cleaning, sanitation of that parking garage, same as they do with the one downtown. I was going to put in here, you know, City Parks was mostly down about eight full-time employees all through last two thousand and twenty-one. That didn't seem as impactful as to be able to say that they were down sixteen thousand six hundred and ninety-nine, or eighty-nine hours of work that would have been accomplished if they would have had those eight full-time employees. We typically hire anywhere from twenty to thirty seasonal employees that maybe ride our mowers or, you know, do that seasonal work. That was another nine thousand six hundred hours of seasonal employment that we didn't have last year as well, because we could not hire people. We're still struggling to hire people today. You know, Casey at City Parks has got four positions open right now, and in two weeks, two of those positions haven't even had any applicants. We're going to still struggle with two thousand and twenty-two to be able to accomplish everything we've had in years past. When you're looking at these kind of hours that we've worked, we weren't able to accomplish, it's led to that second bullet point. This past year, we had to increase the amount of contract mowing that we do. This past year, we had to increase the amount of contract mowing that we do. Worked city employees that were mowing Long's Park, they were not city employees that were mowing, you know, Blue Earth Park, mowing around City Hall. Those were all contracted employees because we simply haven't had enough people to be able to take care of all the spaces that we have, as we have in years past. That goes also for snow removal. We contracted out snow removal. City Parks does a tremendous amount of snow removal that you don't always hear about. We have 13 public parking lots, as well as now the two recreation centers, as well as substantial miles of trails, which they move snow on, you know, every event that we have. We've reduced their responsibilities to the facilities that we have where we house personnel. We move snow at City Park, I'm sorry, at City Hall, the Discovery Center, Municipal Court, at our recreation centers, and we contract out the municipal parking lots at this point simply because we wanted to ensure we could move that snow, but without enough staffing, we were concerned that we wouldn't be able to meet those obligations. So that leads to, as everybody has said, you've heard it from the previous seven departments in front of me, as well as the city manager's office, OEI, pay study, staffing concerns. I don't need to say it much more than it's already been said, but there's a great concern about our ability to be able to attract, recruit, and retain staffing. You know, from my perspective, losing 16,000 hours of work last year, we're creating a substantial backlog of work. Today, you know, the 100-plus employees that are within Parks and Recreation, we're down 15 full-time positions. We're down more than 10% of our workforce. It's a big impact, you know, in trying to provide the services that we do. I know you're hearing it from all of us, but I think it's important that you do because it's, it's a huge topic. That backlog, deferred maintenance, you know, this is probably more relative to the next slide. Previous CIPs where we've not been able to replace the equipment that we need to. Critical item for us moving forward to have a consistent CIP funding source so that we can clear up some of that backlog of projects and replace equipment to be able to provide the services. Just feeds right into 22 and beyond. We've gone through an exercise to look at our 30 parks, all the facilities that we have, all of the amenities that we have in the parks. Parks and Recreation maintains, you know, more physical structures, you know, a lot of them around town. When you think about all the structures that we have in our parks. We've identified 112 projects that we estimate to be greater than 50,000. And those projects are simply to repair, replace, or maintain existing assets. It's not something that needs to be done next year or two years or three years, but it's something that we see needs to be addressed over the next 10 years, which again, goes back to the previous point of a consistent CIP so that we can effectively plan and be able to maintain existing assets that we currently own instead of letting them deteriorate. Declining workforce, this is a big topic for me. Declining revenues, for the last four years, we've been asked to reduce, you know, our budget. We have one of the largest budgets, you know, general fund budget in the city. And so naturally, I can understand that, that we are being asked to reduce in ways that we can. That certainly affects our ability to be able to provide services. And I think we need to ask ourselves, you know, what is the future of Parks and Recreation? Do we continue to provide those programs and activities that I highlighted from 2021 accomplishments? Or do we move forward with more facilitating the community's use of our facilities? That's a big question. It leads right into this next point. Our strategic plan goal 4.5 recommends a strategic plan, a master plan for Parks and Recreation. I think this is very critical for the department moving forward. It needs to be a community process. I envision, you know, steering committee, public involvement, public meetings. If we're going to continue to, you know, be faced with a declining workforce, being faced with declining revenues, we need to fully understand what kind of reduction in services are we talking about? We've been doing this internally the last several years. We've reduced our services over the last couple of years. What are we going to look like moving forward? Huge topic for us coming up. Okay. Let's couple it with indoor aquatics. We have the final steering committee meeting February 7th. That also is a goal in the strategic plan 4.6. You are going to be receiving a final report from that steering committee later this spring. There's not a date set for that yet, but we're going to need to understand what is the next step? Are we progressing with something? Are we putting it on hold? What are the potential finance strategies for that? It's going to be a discussion with all of you, you know, this year. There has to be some sort of next step. Then I put on here also, you know, CECO, the CECO project. That's the last project from the current quality of life sales tax that's in place. Envision it to be an eight and a half million dollar rebuild of ball fields at CECO, tennis courts at CECO. I could see us starting up the development of a RFQ this year, potentially securing a design team 2023. I envision that also to be a public process, steering committee involved in that, so that we can fully understand what type of improvements we're talking about for an eight and a half million dollar improvement, as we had promised the community and what the community voted for previously. Substantial projects for Parks and Recreation. That's what's happening in the future. With that, happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Eddie, hi. Thank you. I think you were able to squeeze in a lot into the allotted slides that you were given. Lots of information, but I have a few questions. Are the, I'm pretty sure I know the answer to this. The, the car tracks and such that were on Annenberg Park that was messed up for a little while, that's all been taken care of, right?
Most all of it has been taken care of. The FEMA project, the flood projects, we've completed the parking lot. It's mostly completed. We still have some landscaping in, in some of the parking lot islands to do. One project that we still have to occur is, we call it dredging the, the lake, Jerry Dishman Lake. We're not actually going to dredge it. We envision actually a, a vacuum process to be able to pull out material that we know is in the lake. We have to be able to complete that by September of this year. So that's a project that's still to occur, but other disruption beyond that, no, there won't be.
All right. So there was some footage or photos about these cars, I would assume, a car or two that was going around on the soccer field at Annenberg with the tread marks? You know what I'm talking about? Was it at Annenberg?
I'm sorry. I'm not, I'm not.
We had some vandalism to the soccer fields recently.
Some vandalism?
Oh.
I don't think it's been able to be repaired because it's, we're not in that growing season.
Yeah, the vandalism occurred, tire tracks, et cetera, that occurred out there. The damage is because our turf is not dormant at the time. And anytime you're on frozen turf, when it's still in an active growing state, it's very damaged and it has to be addressed within a growing season.
Okay. So probably in the summer.
I'm sorry, I don't, I don't hear real well with the masks.
That's, that's all right. And of course, the masks don't help a whole lot with that either. I'm glad to see the indoor tournaments going on, like you referenced in 242022, that was going to be used as part of a, a component for that revenue source for the indoor meets. I'm glad that's happening. At the Douglas Center, are we charging people? Somewhere I saw that they have to purchase, I don't know if it's $2 or $5 or what it is, whereas at the other two rec centers, it's free.
We don't, no, we don't charge to get into any of the recreation centers.
Okay.
We charge for programs and activities that we put on that will occur within those recreation centers. The indoor tournaments, we charge a rental fee for those tournament providers to be able to rent that space and have that tournament. But there's not a charge to come into either the Douglas Center, Anthony Recreation Center, or Eisenhower Recreation Center. We ask for people to sign up for a membership that so that we can track who people are, but there's not a fee for that membership. Just the programs or activities or rentals that occur in those facilities.
The, the weights at Douglas Center. If you go upstairs at the Douglas Center and want to use the weights, there is a monthly charge.
Okay. And that's clear then for the participants, that the rest of the facility is available to them at no cost?
Correct.
Okay. Let me see. The indoor aquatics you mentioned, I think quality of life is very important in our community. I think that's one of the main reasons families like to live in Manhattan. We have 6,000 students in our schools and all of their, they like the activities and I think that's why they pass the sales tax initiatives that we have moving forward, also for the CECO and all of these other plans that we have. So I'm glad it's doing well, is what I'm trying to say. I'm glad people are still taking advantage of everything that's out there. And I'm glad that even though the numbers may be down a little bit, it's good that people are still trying to get in leagues and participate and utilize the three rec centers that we have in place and, and the outdoor linear, all those linear parks and fields that we have. It would be good to see some of the playground equipment that you mentioned, some of the equipment in those parks kind of painted or whatever it might be, but I understand the lack of staff that you referenced for that too. Because sometimes those are an eyesore and people don't want to go because they also equate lack of paint to being dangerous somehow. And, and that's not really the case. So hopefully we can change that in the near future. So thank you.
Couple of things, Eddie. Under the Sunset Zoo thing, I, I, they got a $60,000 childcare sustainability grant, which obviously didn't sustain the childcare facility at the zoo, correct? And so I'm going to get on my childcare horse here. And the letter that Jared sent out, or it was in the memo at the time they closed that, what, what was it called? The Zoo Sprouts, Sprouts, that was it. He said in the letter, "Due to a change of the interpretation of the regulations, we're going to have to close because we can no longer function financially or whatever, make it." So when, when everybody's talking about childcare, this and this, and I bring up over regulation and everybody poo-poos me, there is the biggest example of changing an interpretation of a regulation. The, the regulation was in place, they didn't need to change the interpretation. It drove the Zoo Sprouts thing out of business. And so that's not your job, at your hall. I'm just saying that $60,000 for, to sustain the thing obviously didn't work because that wasn't even enough to keep that Zoo Sprouts thing open. I had something else, but I forgot what it was now. I got fired up. So I'll come back to it when I think of it.
We, we're, we're fortunate to receive that grant funding. We appreciate that. Sunset Zoo operates a little differently with the special Sunset Zoo Fund. Very important because the lack of attendance from 2020 hurt them severely.
Eddie, I have one, one question. The, the plan is to open all three pools. What's, what's it look like from Blue Earth Plaza? I know there's some real challenges there and that's a, almost a pool in itself when everybody gets in there, so.
Well, you, you've made a mark on me with your prioritization. And number one priority is going to be those aquatic centers. I, I can see us opening up Blue Earth, maybe not to the extent that it's been in the past. We have some maintenance issues with some of the leapers. Getting the, the river flowing is probably the simplest. The cryojets where it just bubbles up at the end in the circle is simpler. The, the leapers are more complex. We've talked about, you know, maybe trying to phase it some. We need to see what kind of staffing. We have two positions open still in our aquatics section. We, we've got to get those dealt with to be able to be confident, to be able to open. It's important to recognize safe water. It's not just putting water in and turning things on. The chemical balance, the cleanliness, the sanitation of those facilities and Blue Earth as much as anything because it's not guarded. And it has the potential, you know, more so than our pools because there's not a fence around it, there's not lifeguards at it all the time. I hope that we can get it open. That's in our plans. I'm not promising anything with anything with aquatics until we get a better idea that we're going to be able to hire 100-plus lifeguards and we can start filling some of those maintenance, not start filling. We get applicants and we're able to get maintenance staff onboard. Safe water is a big deal.
I think we live in different parts of town, many of us, and so we are, we're able to observe different parks. So I'm particularly close to the Northeast Park. And it, so my observation is that most, so this, you've said that we've discontinued coordinating like youth soccer, and that's what's primarily happening at the Northeast Park. Do those participants, families, or they register then with the sec, the third, the, the organizing group? They don't register with the city, is that right?
I'm sorry. Can you help me with that?
I can take this off.
They, they do. They register with, there's Puma, there's Sporting Call Valley. They offer programs then for the youth in the community to come out, participate. They use it as almost a recruiting type of atmosphere, but it's a program for a lot of the youth in the community. Doesn't prevent them from using Northeast Park. They primarily do go to Annenberg for a lot of their programs. I'm not sure how much Northeast Park is being used by organized soccer in the community today, but at one, you know, at one time, I know a lot of the facilities had a lot of pressure with our programs, but we've, that's evolved over time.
Sometimes the parking lot is full. And my observation is that there are more out of Riley County cars. There are Potawatomi County and then people who live here at the university or military or wherever, out-of-state tags. So it's really serving, and that's, you know, and, and they use it more as practice fields, I think. I don't think it's competitive. But just to say that it's, it seems to me to be well-used and I'm glad to see it. I wish we had more city people using it. That's not, you know, I just think it attracts a lot of people. And I'm glad we can have those kinds of recreation programs. I'm interested in how we can pay for things going into the future, like all of us are trying to figure that out.
We, how we manage Northeast Park and the use of the sports fields out there. We don't coordinate with any of the groups and schedule practices in that space. That's always been a drop-in space, whether it's the shelters or the sports fields. So that activity that you see, you know, is unprogrammed.
By us, but it's programmed by somebody.
Well, well, sure.
Or some entity.
Somebody's saying, hey, let's go practice out here. There's open space to be able to do that. We will recommend that people consider, if they're not able to get where we programmed at Annenberg or Griffith or City, because those spaces might be full, that's a place that we recommend that is a large open space that they can drop in and use. We hope to be able to improve the turf out there and increase irrigation so that it is even more conducive to, you know, those sports fields right now. The quality of turf is not good and we hope to improve that. It was interesting, and you were at the public meeting in regards to the utility easement, and one of the neighbors who lives immediately adjacent to the park was commenting also similar to you, how busy the park is and a lot of people are out. We saw that all through and continue with COVID. We see it because our trash cans are so full.
Yes.
People are out having lunch in the park, being outside and just, it's been a great thing for parks because people have found them, maybe more so than they have in the past.
I just wanted to comment on the use in the Northeast Park, just, so I'm sure your staff is aware, but even the use, a lot of the use is after your staff goes home too, so. And the use of that maintenance facility. Yeah. Eddie, I, I do have one more question. When she was speaking about soccer, so the city of Manhattan is not offering any soccer, soccer programming?
Any soccer programming?
Yeah.
We don't envision for this upcoming year soccer program. At this point, recreational-wise, it's happening through the clubs. Clubs offer, you know, scholarship opportunities for...
Clubs offer, you know, scholarship opportunities for people to participate. We work very directly with them to facilitate spaces for them to practice as well as, as have their games.
So that's, that's private, so that's for-profit or private organizations or traveling soccer teams, competitive play or whatever it might be. But when the city was offering them, the, it was more, you know, mural-like and more leisurely and you had, I'm just thinking back when mine was raising my children, there was organized soccer and competitive soccer, organized travel teams. And then there was the city ones. And oftentimes I had my kids in the city ones. But I hope we have some component of soccer from the city as well because otherwise it does get expensive. Even if they're scholarshiped in, it becomes expensive because sometimes those traveling ones or organized ones have really specific needs as far as their uniforms or their shoes and such. Whereas the city ones are a little bit more lax because it is not competitive play. They're kind of just playing against each other in the community. So I hope we, I, I hope we revisit that. Otherwise, I think it does exclude quite a few families. If they have three or four children, it's very hard to put them into organized competitive sports like that. It was easier for me when I had three kids to put them into a city, city soccer sports. So I, I just want you to think about that.
Just, just a response to a little bit. My understanding, their recreation program at the time was, I think, $5 more than what our recreation program was. So they've started a more aggressive recreation program where people could sign up individually as opposed to signing up on teams. But anytime we reduce services, there's somebody that is going, we're gonna miss out. There's no doubt about it. That's why that master plan, strategic plan, future of Parks and Recreation is very critical. You know, we're not gonna continue to grow 10 million, 11 million, 12 million. We have new facilities that we have. We're obligated to make sure we manage and facilitate for the community to use. If we keep seeing that reduction in workforce, bullet point, declining revenues, we can't continue to do everything we've done in the past. Something has to stop. And we need to go through a process to determine that.
I, I challenge Rob to come up with a better and more interesting metric than how much trash cans, how full your trash cans are and how often, when you start measuring what the Public Works is doing. So, that's an interesting metric. I appreciate that. But it is what it is. If you gotta figure out some way how much people are using. And if it's, all the trash receptacles will fall, fall every other day. It's like, well, that, compared to a different time, that would give you a good indication, I suppose, of the usage.
We have more sophisticated ways. We've, we've been measuring trail use. We've done that around town. We have those numbers as well. It's more fun to talk about trash cans, sometimes how full they are. We have over 200 trash cans on our route, our sanitation route that our sanitation people pick up. That was one of the reductions that we potentially talked about. We have reduced it and we're seeing the impact of it. Fun to talk about.
I think the other thing we need to think about is providing facilities and having no return. So, and, and that's, as we look, as we go forward, we are providing soccer fields and baseball diamonds and, for youth, but we, and, the Northeast Park or whatever, but we aren't in a position to reclaim any money for fees. So I'm sure that'll be part of the master plan.
Well, and the challenge there is we provided them at a very subsidized rate.
Absolutely.
So, part of the trade-off is that if you're going to provide a low-cost program, you still have to hire staff to run that program and we're way upside down. That's why we made that change. And we have some privatized entities that are willing to absorb some of that programming at a reduced rate that they would normally charge. So, but there are folks that fall through the gaps there. And that's part of why it's important to, for folks to rank those services of how much can we afford to subsidize? And it gets back to a policy question, you know? And there's, Parks and Rec mostly runs on sales tax. Sales tax has been lean the past few years. So, and everything else competes for it. But the other key is we don't have seasonal staff that are going to be hired to run those programs. It's difficult to put them on. Some of the challenges.
Well, if we lose less money managing or doing, facilitating community usage than actually actively running it, that, that may be the lesser two evils here, so.
That's been the approach.
I just know the turfing of a soccer field is a, it is really expensive, so just as we look at the life of that soccer, the life of that turf, and when it comes around to having to replace it again, it's a million or $2 million deal. And so that's the part of us talking about. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
We're going through introductions tonight, Tiv. Robott is up next and I, I'm hoping he's reduced his 17 slides down to three or four, so.
Thank you, Rob.
He still followed the font rule size, though.
I did follow the font. Yes, never mind. It's getting late. I probably should censor myself. All right. I got two and a half pages. Commissioners, you got any questions on 2021? I don't want to diminish how hard Public Works employees in terms of production for 2021. Whether it's billions of gallons of water treated and delivered to people's homes and their faucets or how many blocks of streets that were swept or anything like that. Is there any specific question from any of those different divisions in what we produced in 2021? Okay, excellent.
I think we get that in the city manager's monthly report. And if you look at December, December's version, then that's the annual report, right?
That, you're, that's exactly where I extracted my two pages worth of numbers. You know, again, a lot of employees, you know, Eric talked about his staff, you know, highly educated office dwellers. I have a mix. I have two PhDs and I have GEDs. And a lot of those folks have to work in the field. Potholes don't get fixed. Typing on a keyboard, water mains don't get fixed. Same with plowing streets. With that, operational challenges, I'm not gonna beat a dead horse. You've heard from every department head before me. This is Rob's assessment of Too Low. The last two days, I've been dealing with personnel changes in utilities division. It's like a merry-go-round. It's getting really, really frustrating. Tammy and I had to have a hug earlier to console each other just because we just can't seem to keep staff. And we're losing them to other municipalities, we're losing them to Kansas Gas. It's a combination of wages, it's a combination of workplace balance, on-call pay, so on and so forth. So we got some challenges. Again, I thought Tammy really kind of summarized it good earlier. We don't necessarily need to be the best in each and every different category. The Capers Three, I've got, I'll keep, just keep my mouth shut about what I think of that program. That really hurts the attraction. I talked about the revolving door with utilities and street division, retention of employees. And that all comes with concerns with possibly an east annexation. I think Eric's gonna do some presentations before he rides off into the sunset this year on that report. And if we do go east, we're gonna need more staff, plain and simple. So we'll just see where that report and that analysis takes us. We all like projects. We all like feathers in our cap. We like to talk about what's being accomplished. But I need folks, I need people to help produce, manage. Just hiring another consultant, someone, Katie mentioned this earlier. Just because you hire a consultant, you hire a contractor, someone still has to manage it. Someone still has to check up on them, so on and so forth. Some of these projects that Ron and Jason and Jared highlighted earlier and stole from me, they're high-profile, they're complex, they're not simplistic, they upset a lot of folks, and so on and so forth, so. With that, regulatory issues, please don't yell at me, Commissioner Hattasal, but there certainly are some challenges out there. I think Ron's elevated and made you all aware of the lime sledge lagoons and some frustration with KDHE. I think he's asked some of our state representatives, both representatives and senator, to help us out with KDHE, to get some principal loan forgiveness from the infrastructure money to defer those costs. Again, those costs hurt the utility funds and I don't necessarily agree with it. We have some concerns with the lead and copper rules that are coming out. Traditionally, the city of Manhattan has done very well in our testing in terms of, if you read anything about my home state of Michigan and some of the different problems with lead contamination in water, we don't have those issues, but that, but they don't care. They want more testing. And it's gonna come down, it's gonna require time, management, and reports. Valve exercising is something KDHE has been beating us up for a while. And we're gonna have to probably hire some staff to address that, if I could hire some. On the wastewater side, BioSalads Real Estate, probably an action item be coming before you here in February. We have some existing infrastructure on land and it's up for sale. We don't own the land, we have lease rights. But we have existing infrastructure and we have some internal meetings and, and we're gonna have to make a decision. Kind of like Scott talked about, the first right of refusal on that property off of Amherst. A similar situation with this BioSalads land. Again, we had another record year in production of profit. I know that was one of your questions in the past, Commissioner Hattasal. Again, we had very good returns on that investment we made a couple of years ago in terms of crops and the sale of those crops. So it was our second highest year. Tammy mentioned ADA regulations, the ADA study. Again, just wanna reaffirm, in order to keep going after all these state and federal grants, we're gonna have to go through that process, whether we like it or not. Pavement markings, crosswalks, we just continue to add those. We can drive around town and see how some of them aren't being addressed. Again, that comes down to staffing and funding available. Stormwater, as always, we collect and sample a number of our natural streams. Right now, we're very much in a monitoring phase, but as with all federal administrations, things can change and new rules can come down. Aging infrastructure on the water side. You know, we're looking at certainly on the northwest side of town, possibly a new water tower that'll have to be sited. Lower elevation than the Colbert Hills, but higher than the ground tank that's at Londonderry. As well as, and I think Commissioner, Mayor Morris, you've brought this up before, about the water wells. You know, it's still kind of on the radar, replacing old wells that are very expensive to treat that hardened water. We have plenty of water rights. That's not our issue. We have plenty of water that's available to get to the plant. It's about how can we reduce our costs in the future with higher quality water that costs less or requires less chemicals to soften and so forth.
How many new wells do we need?
I think Randy, the firm, well, again, it all depends upon production. We currently have 20 wells in our system.
Right.
We're gonna decommission one of them with the Levy project. So, you know, it could be two to four, I would say.
In the coming year, we need two to four?
No, not coming year, just again, you know.
Generally, we'll, we'll need two to four in the coming year.
Say, say five to seven.
Five to seven, okay.
Yep. Again, just trying to keep it on the radar, not lose sight of it. Again, long-range goals, trying to make sure that we certainly.
Okay, thanks.
Uh, let's see here.
That's something I can measure and I can see.
Absolutely.
All right.
Absolutely. And, and I could be wrong. I'm, I'm pretty sure it'd be somewhere between two and four, so. Uh, let's see here, where am I at? I mentioned BioSalads land, additional maintenance, oh, water fund cash balance. Again, that, you know, that helps out our bond rating. We made a correction and I appreciate the commission voting for that and that taking effect January 1. We shall see where we land at the end of this year in terms of fund balances. As always, you'll have to endure Randy and Brian and myself talking about the utility funds in that lengthy presentation. Transportation-wise, challenges, funding-wise, we already have our fingers in a lot of different areas of the community. I got three different projects up there, Casement, Grand Mirror, Roundabout, and Hayes Drive. All of them probably really should be upgraded. The challenge is, is how do we come up with a financing package that's appropriate for each of them? Or do we just select one and have to push some others off until when we can afford it? That's some of the challenges going forward. Talked already about pavement marking crews, stormwater side. It, it sometimes boggles my mind that we ask homeowners associations to maintain detention ponds. We don't ask subdivision, take care of their fire hydrants, take care of their curbs. It, it just boggles my mind a little bit. That's a discussion that we'll have to get into. Reminded Brian the other day that we need to come, bring back to the commission a policy on fee in lieu of stormwater. I think that's something that was discussed about two years ago. And again, as, as numerous other folks have mentioned, COVID's kind of delayed that discussion and frankly, just a heavy workload. So with that, again, I have a long list, I see someone played with my slides, okay. I have a long list of projects that are already bid and awarded, projects that are being designed and yet to be designed. I've got something in each of those categories. I don't want to read the list to you. What I will simply tell you, and I want you to take as a takeaway tonight, as you go into your retreat for Friday, 2022 is full for Public Works, plain and simple. If you're going to add something to our plate, something has to come off. We're, we're just at, we're just at max capacity. And, you know, I, I stress out HR for hiring folks. I think poor Tammy probably got five or six different emails from my superintendents today. What's the status on this offer? What's the status on this individual? When are we having interviews? Is my hiring matrix approved? You know, I emailed Katie a couple of times today on different projects, you know, have you reviewed this? We need a, we need a statement on that. I stress other support divisions. I think the last two days, Rena's staff with Rebecca going over forecast sheets, where did we end 2021? So on and so forth. So in order, if you all want to add more in 2022 for Public Works, something's gonna have to come off. So with that, commissioners, it's late. I certainly will entertain any questions you may have. And, well, it's late for me, I'm getting old.
I, I do have just one question. Since Public Works mainly deals with infrastructure, do you know about how much money or funds, has that been discussed, would come from the infrastructure bill?
So, so the discussions that I've been involved with, the only state, or I'm sorry, only agency within the state that's been a good leader has been Secretary Julie Lorenz from KDOT. I've not heard anything out of KDHE. It's very frustrating. When, one of the discussions, I recently stepped off the American Public Works Board for the Kansas chapter. I was the president last year. And I was invited to a meeting and Julie had a number of different folks from different organizations throughout the state. There was an email that came out, I think it was either Friday or Monday. I haven't read through all the details. In the discussion that I was involved with, she talked very much about boosting, and Ron mentioned this earlier, boosting existing programs, putting more money into this pot or that pot. Some pots are competitive, some pots are automatic and are transfers and so forth. So I'm sorry, I don't have specific numbers. What I will tell you, when I worked at KDOT 16 years ago, we always had more requests than we had money and that hasn't changed. All's, hopefully we'll do, Commissioner, is increase our odds. And again, there's gonna be matches, so, and there's, you know, there's. And there's, you know, there's, I don't know if there's going to be buy. You know, President Obama, he had Buy American clauses. There was all sorts of things. I haven't seen all the rules yet. And those can add into increased costs as well. It all depends on what the rules are. Same thing with inspections. I'm down, we just hired an inspector today. But I'm down on inspector, but I've got one that's saying he's going to retire here soon, too. So, we're not really staffed up or have the training for inspection. So, then you have to go hire a private consultant, and they cost, they provide great service, but they cost more than what it costs for me to have someone on staff, so. I'm not trying to elude your question, I just don't have.
You're right. I think there's not enough information. I was at the P MPO meeting with Stephanie Peterson, and she had similar, we had a similar discussion. Do you know if any of this bill has any funds for hiring people, for salaries and such? Is it purely hardware and software as opposed to people and salaries?
No, I think that's a great question. So, when I was in the discussion, both myself and the president for the Contractors Association with Secretary Lorenz, we both brought up workforce development. And was there any way in which these funds could go to the help, whether it's push high school students into some sort of journeyman-type program? You know, for education, for CDLs. We're all dying for CDLs, whether it's delivering concrete, delivering limestone, or plowing snow and fixing roads for myself. We asked that question. I'll have to go through that email to see if there's anything in there. But there was a number of us that talked about that. KDOT's in the same boat. They're absolutely struggling with the retention. I wish I could remember the statistics. I swear, she said they are down like 30% or 40% of their inspectors from eight or nine years ago. I, I'm probably butchering the, the stats, but I remember her bringing up some, they caught my attention, those numbers, of how much even their staff is down as well. But yeah, workforce compensation, incentives, retention bonuses, anything. We certainly asked about it, and I don't have any details at this time.
I think it's just important to recognize that all of the communities are facing similar problems. And hopefully, the bill has a line item to address the workforce issue. Because like you said, you're already booked for 2022. You need people to make that a little bit, go a little bit more smoothly. So, I'm hoping there's something in there. And even with the ARPA funds, there are several bills that are coming our way, and I'm hoping there's line items for workforce and salaries and everything else that you need. I know they reduce the requirements for 60 days or 90 days, or whatever it might be, for healthcare. And they did the same thing for the education profession. I would hate to reduce anything like that for Public Works. But I don't know what type of things your professional organizations are looking at to recruit more people into this type of job.
You mentioned Stephanie Peterson at the MPO. Her and I probably talk three, four times a month, sometimes multiple times during the week. Her and I collaborate quite a bit on grants, what are good fits, what are not, what has she heard. Both of us have, were previously employed at KDOT and have, she has some different connections than I did because she worked in a different bureau. But Stephanie and I communicate quite a bit. Again, trying to leverage, things have to be a good fit for us, not just because, oh, it's a big number, so. Commissioners, anything else? All right. Rob?
Thanks, Rob. Appreciate it. Commissioners, appreciate your time. And hopefully, this has been a benefit to you to just have a better understanding of what we're facing. One of the things that we really tried to focus on at our staff retreat in preparing for this year is the plates are full. In some cases, they're overflowing. And, and we know that there will be projects that increase that plate just from what's in the works and, and coming, coming on to us. So, it's a matter of trying to work on that timeline and partitioning things. You know, we can't work on everything all at once and be successful. So, we've got to spread that out so that we can have a methodological approach and, and hopefully fill some of our vacancies. And, you know, some of the new folks are going to take a while to, to train. So, we look forward to the discussion with you on Friday as we attack some of those.
Mark?
I just, where did everybody go who used to have a job? It's not like there's millions more jobs now than there were two years ago. There's just millions of empty jobs that nobody's taking. So, how are these people making a living if they're not working?
So, so I, I'll take a little stab at it. It's not all of it. Obviously, COVID has impacted a lot of it. The folks that, that, you know, what the downsizing has been predicted for a long time. And that's why some of us have been doing succession planning or trying to do that as best we can. You know, the baby boomers are going to retire and all of that aspect of things. So, what I've observed is that COVID has accelerated that. You know, you've got a lot of folks that probably really wanted to work five more years, but COVID was enough. You know, I've had it. I don't need it. I, I'm eligible. I'm going to do it. And, and so that's accelerated those vacancies. But that workforce shortage has been predicted for a long time.
Well, because I know, like my wife over at the lab, they, they barely get anybody to apply. And every place is looking for stuff. I'm not sure if college kids aren't working part-time jobs in restaurants and retail anymore. Everybody's got 529 plans that's paying their way, and they don't need to work. I just don't, I think the state, instead of spending all this money on ads, beating people up about getting vaccinated, they ought to put some ads out about, go get a job. Here is, there is honor and dignity in having a job and get out of your parents' basement and work. There's billions of jobs. A lot of them pay really quite well. I'm not sure if our wages are, are that much less compelled. Some of them obviously are, if they're, if they're taking the same job in the private sector or in Kansas City or somewhere. But even if McDonald's is paying 12 or 13 bucks an hour, there's jobs out there that are worth having. And it's, it's time that somebody on the national level, the state level, said, hey, people, for the good of the country, if you're not working now, go take a job, because this is getting serious with, there, yeah. Places, restaurants are half-full, and you got to wait 20 minutes to get into a room that's essentially almost empty because they don't have enough staff. And it's, yeah, it's not just a city problem. It's, it's every business problem. And I just can't believe that there's not a bunch of people sitting around somewhere playing video games who shouldn't be having a job because that's what life is about. It's about doing something meaningful with your life, and, and not working is not part of that plan.
And I think just an interesting observation in, in that whole aspect of temporary workers. I mean, we've seen this. Eddie's, Eddie's experienced it over the years. And having, I mean, how many summers have you heard us, we're having a hard time hiring lifeguards? I mean, that whole, that, that's just that one subset. Now, that's a specialized set because they have to have those certifications. But you look at our declining enrollments at K-State. So, more of those students are probably working and trying to get internships in their profession that they're studying. So, they're, they're not taking those ancillary jobs because they don't need to. So, that's part of it. But clearly, there's other aspects of, at play. And it's, it's part of the challenge that we have. So, you know, we've even talked about if you're authorized 12 positions, do you need to be authorized 15 just so you can get 12? You know, that, that's crazy. But it, it's probably more of a reality as this situation continues. So, those are, those are some of the challenges we face.
I think, I think also there's a lot of people that have been into gig jobs. So, they're either delivering this or that, or whatever it might be. A lot of students are, you know, if you see Grubhub and all of these other things, I don't even know the way, many ways people deliver things anymore. But a lot of them have decided to do things of that, Uber, Lyft, whatever it might be. They're not in space, in a place anymore. And there's, there's just so many more that are remote. And that's true even in the education field. They just, they're just exhausted. They're doing more remote stuff. They're still working. They just found different ways to earn their money, and it's more remote and gig jobs, as they say.
I think people are going where they can be paid the most. If they're going to work and they're going to do a similar job, why wouldn't you go where you get a higher wage if you can? Anyway, that's a big society question right now. And we're a small, probably pond, but we're having those same issues. Is there anything else we should discuss this evening?
We don't have anything else, Mayor, so thanks for your input.
So, 9:30 at the Zoo Education Building?
9:30 at the Zoo, yep, Friday. And bring your strategic plan book.
John, you look like you want to say something.
Yeah, I mean, I've had the opportunity to meet with everybody and kind of heard it a little more again tonight. Just want to say I appreciate all the hard work everyone's doing. And we've just been talking about the jobs and how everyone's had to work with short-staffed. And plus, as you've talked tonight, and you talked to me as I went around and toured with you, I mean, we just had a big, long thing about how do we hire. But we also talked about, you know, the wage gaps, all the projects that are out there. You know, we've got some issues with our debt. We need to replenish our reserve funds. We've got outmoded systems and other, other things we need to do. And I just think as we go to our retreat and go to work on this stuff, and I think I said it to everyone I met with, is that I'd like to really see us do that long-term planning, to do, we have a strategic plan, but it's really not tied to a financial plan that works with it. And I think that's what we need to do because we can't boil the ocean and do all this stuff at once. And I know my experience working on budgets with commissions is we're very myopic. We work on that one year, and we're not looking at those other years. But I think we need to work on something like a 10-year plan, tying it to the strategic plans. Will it change? Sure, there'll be new commissions, everything else. You know, and that may mean that, one, we won't probably be able to hire some of them, but some people may need, say, two positions. But maybe we fill one the next year so we can raise the wages looking down the road of where we can fill, you know, the others. But if we put together a long-range plan like that, and it's 10 years, and we see in 10 years we're going to increase the middle levy by 100%, we know that's not going to fly. So, we got to go back and rework it and use that word that Winn likes a lot, prioritize, and figure out how do we do that 10-year plan with something our citizens can afford and then give us something to work with. And then when a new commission does take over, at least we've got some, if they want to change it, fine, but at least we put something into place that shows how we could get to where we, you know, want to be. And I kind of feel that's like the one thing that we've always been missing in the past. Or if we do a strategic plan, if it's not tied to dollars and cents and numbers, what really good is it? Because we're just talking aspirational. We're not talking about what we really can do. So, look forward to work on that with you.
Just want to add one thing to that. I think the thing that shifts each, each commission is also the projects. If the projects were the same, that would be different. I think that's the conversation we need to have.
Well, I mean, that's why I say everything will change. But I think we need to put the projects in that we know of. We need to, even on these, some of these monies we think we're going to get from the federal government, what's our estimate? So, if that doesn't come in, then we know why we're missing whatever it is that we're missing. But I know Jason, when I was watching meetings some time back, was talking about all the equipment that needs to be replaced in X number of years and those schedules. I mean, all that needs to be built into it as well. At least that way, we've got a roadmap to, to follow versus working every year and trying to hit a number for that one year without the concept of what those other years are going to be.
Yeah, I appreciate those comments. We have several financial goals that are in that strategic plan and, and looking multiple year and forecasting based on, and making some of those assumptions. And, and that's what you have to revisit. Sometimes those assumptions are off, so you've got to revisit them. But I agree with a lot of what you said. And so, I think that's going to be a, a good discussion to have with you. So, we appreciate it.
Okay. With that, we're adjourned. Thank you.